The Commissioner to arrive and he will be providing his presentation. Okay, and Commissioner, you can start your presentation whenever you're ready.
All right. Good evening, Council President Cohen, Vice President Middleton, Chair McCray, and Honorable Members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Baltimore Police Department's Fiscal Year 2026 Budget. I believe most of you are familiar with my team by now, so in the interest of time, I'll forego the introductions. This is my second budget presentation since becoming Commissioner, and I'm pleased to report that we are making tremendous, at times, historical progress on many fronts. In 2023, we saw the largest single-year drop in homicides in modern city history. We surpassed that record again in 2024. And during the same period, we also saw a decline in non-fatal shootings. So far this year, that downward trend continues. Year-to-date, homicides are down 24%. As of today, we have 56 homicides compared to 74 last year. In April, we did something that had never been done before since we've been keeping records. We went under seven homicides. We had five homicides for the month of April. At the same time, non-fatal shootings are also down 24%. As of the day, 128 people have been the victim of gunshot wounds compared to 170 last year. If you add the two up, that's 60 less victims of gunshots. We're also seeing broad-based reductions in both violent and property crime. Rape is down 34%, aggravated assault is down 14%, robberies are down 20%, and auto thefts are down 35%. Another major area of progress are the clearance rate. In nearly every category, our clearance rates are improved from last year. Homicide clearance rate is hovering right around 65% to 70%. Non-fatal shootings are between 45% and 48%. Today, we are near or above the national average in almost every category, with robberies and burglaries exceeding the national average by a good deal. Our detectives are doing outstanding work, building strong cases, and that momentum was carried into 2025. Get into the officer proactivity, which has also increased dramatically. Traffic stops in 2025 are up 55%, foot patrol is up 24%, business checks are up 22%. We've already seized 1,100 guns removed from the streets of Baltimore this year. Something that we haven't really done a whole lot of in the last several years is happening more this year. We're starting to dismantle some of our open-air drug trafficking organizations. Felony CDS arrests are up 11%, misdemeanor CBS CDS arrests are up 28%, building stronger connections with residents and youth both. Our quality-of-life crimes, we're seeing movement as well. Since State's Attorney's Office implemented the Citation Dock, quality-of-life calls for service declined over 16% since 20 in the two-year period. That said, the number of actual citations written remains low. Officers need to improve the use of that tool, but I believe the verbal warnings are making a big difference. I'm proud of these statistics, but statistics alone don't drive us. Our mission remains clear: less violence, less crime, better service, enhanced partnerships, and building trust equals a safer city. We move on to the consent decree with the compliance and reform. We continue to make progress with the consent decree. The department achieved sustained compliance in two paragraphs. The first two paragraphs reach full sustained compliance and no longer being monitored by the Department of Justice or the consent decree team. As of April, court has terminated the federal oversight on those sections. Currently, three more sections are in the one-year sustainment phase. In total, 37% of consent decree paragraphs are in full or initial compliance. An additional 43.5 are on track towards compliance. And no matter what happens with DOJ or anywhere else, we will remain a self-assessing organization. And we have continued and pledged our desire to continue this process until we've satisfied all the paragraphs of the consent decrees. Staffing and recruitment, which is a big one. Staffing's been one of our most significant challenges over the past decade and one of the reasons for our rising overtime costs. But it's beginning to turn the corner. Last year, we dipped below 2,000 sworn officers for the first time in decades, reaching the low of 1,976 officers in October. Today, we're up to 2,023 sworn members, a net increase of 47, making it the first time in years we've outpaced attrition. Our recruitment section is doing exceptional work. Early results from our new campaign are promising. Year-to-date, we've hired 95 trainees, nearly double the same period from last year. We have 359 viable candidates in background investigation phase. Applications are up 22%, and our class sizes in the academy are growing. From 2022 to 2024, our average class size was 24. Our last three classes have averaged 48 trainees, with similar numbers expected moving forward. We're also rebuilding the pipeline for future officers. Nearly two dozen cadets in the program today. We'd like to double that next year if we could, or as soon as possible. Plus, we have close to 70 junior cadets, which was formerly known as explorers. That didn't exist after COVID. We had to completely rebuild that program. We now have a pipeline where they become a junior cadet, a cadet, and turn right into a police officer. On the civilian side, we added 100 new hires over the past year. That allows us to put more officers on the street because they can take over some of the administrative spots that officers were filling. While these numbers are incredibly positive, we have a long road ahead to rebuild the ranks fully lost over the past decade, but we're on the right track. Of course, there's a lag time between hiring and impact. All the officers in the academy do not help us with the strength on the street, so we're still working with the backfield with overtime. We're carrying costs of new hires now, and it will take time before we see offsetting reductions in overtime spending. Overtime hours this year will roughly be around the same as last year, possibly a little bit lower. However, we don't have the same budget savings to offset these hours. We're continuing to implement strict oversight to ensure that overtime is used only when necessary for calls for service, investigations, maintaining clearance rates, public safety and special events, and overall coverage to protect the city. As I wrap up, there are many other successes worth mentioning. Our Crime Lab recently received a Foresight Maximus Award, recognizing operations above 90% peak efficiency for only one of 14 labs in the entire country and only one of two large agencies. I don't think I've been even more, ever more optimistic and encouraged about the direction of the department since I've been here my 27 years. I know it's customary to be upbeat at these hearings, but this optimism is rooted in real progress. You've seen it over the last few years. We finally, we certainly face challenges, and there are areas where we fall short, but I believe we are operating on a level we haven't seen in a long time, perhaps ever. Many people deserve recognition for that. Mayor Scott for his continued support of BPD, GPRS partnership with State's Attorney Bates, the strategy itself, MONC, our community violence intervention partners, the community, our local state and federal law enforcement and prosecutorial partners. My leadership teams see it beside me and behind me. And most importantly, the men and women of the Baltimore Police Department who go out there every single day to do a job. I know I'm biased, but I've been in their shoes doing that job. Their jobs today are more challenging and a lot more difficult than I ever had to deal with. But none of these achievements will be possible without their dedication and professionalism. I want to thank each and every one of them for their support and their dedication. I cannot be prouder of what we've accomplished, and I know they will continue to work, this critical work, to ensure less violence, less crime, better service, better partnerships, and building trust with the community will lead to a safer city. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak. I'll now turn the presentation over to CFO Shala Graham.
Good evening. I'm going to go through this presentation quite quickly. This is the budget board chart, so you can see how our budget is structured. It's structured in 10 services. So this is our overview with our mission statement and our goals. So Goal 1, enhancing public safety. Goal 2, building community trust and transparency. So our first service is the Administrative Bureau. So the Administrative Bureau has a budget of $225 million. I'm so sorry. Let me go to the right slide. So $74 million and 201 personnel. The largest areas in the Administrative Bureau will be asset management. So within asset management, we have all the costs for the facilities, the cars. So that has a budget of $31.4 million and only 13 positions because we're paying for all of the facilities and the cars. The second largest area in there would be our Administrative Duties Division. This is where the injured officers are, and that budget is $7.7 million. We have about 90 injured officers at the moment, and they cycle in and out. So the next service is Police Patrol. This is going to be our largest service, our second service. Police Patrol has a budget of $225 million, staffing of 1,456 positions. Most of the budget is from the General Fund, which is $217 million. This service funds the nine districts. It funds community policing, building security. We also have the block grant within here, which is a state-funded grant. You can see on the performance measures, we've been excelling in our performance measures for the number of minutes on average from dispatch to arrival on scene for Priority 1 calls. Our goal is 10 minutes. We have been performing at eight minutes. Our next service is going to be the Criminal Investigation Division. And this has a budget of $110 million and funds 594 positions. Some of the large areas within there are going to be the homicide unit with $16 million in budget, anti-crime with $12 million. And the largest is going to be the DDSD, which has a $33 million budget. In regards to our metrics, you can see here, as the PC talked about, we've been excelling in our metrics. Number of homicide cases cleared annually, the PC talked about this. We achieved 69%. The national average was 58%, so we are well above the national average. And similar chain for non-fatal shootings. Data-driven strategies is our fourth service. It has a budget of over $11 million and 53 personnel, of which 9.4 million is general funded. The largest program in there is going to be the Watch Center with a general fund budget of $6.4 million. That funds 22 authorized positions. The next service is going to, oops. Is going to be Public Integrity Bureau. And this has a budget of over $20 million and funds 98 positions. Of that, most of the budget is general fund at $19.8 million. The largest unit in there is going to be Internal Investigations with a budget of $12.5 million, and that funds 62 positions. The Recruitment Section, this is our sixth service. This has a budget of $32 million, general fund $28.3 million, and funds 204 positions. It has two units within it, has new recruits. So these are the people, actually the POTs, going through the academy. And that budget's $22 million. It also funds the sworn recruits, so that's all of our recruitment, the staff putting people through backgrounds. So that budget's $6 million. In regards to the performance measures, this service has been excelling in its performance measures for number of sworn hires from Baltimore City. In fiscal year 2024, we had 40%. Our target was 30%. A number of African-American sworn hires was 63%. Our target was 30%. And we've increased those targets for future years. The Crime Lab and Evidence Control has a budget of nearly $27 million, funds 177 positions. Of that, $25 million is general funded, 162 positions are general funded. The largest unit within there is going to be your Crime Lab with $13 million budget and funds 80 positions. Again, they've been excelling at their performance measures. Number of items dispositioned, the target was 30,000. They exceeded 41,000. Number of hours of training conducted to maintain national accreditation, their target was 6,500. They exceeded that with over 7,000. Our eighth service is going to be our Compliance Bureau with a budget of $82 million. It funds 382 positions. Of that, $76 million is general funded. The largest units within there are going to be Information Technology that funds a lot of the technology contracts. That has a budget of $12.5 million in education and training. It has a budget of $11.4 million. On our next-to-last service, we have the Special Operations Section that has a budget of nearly $27 million, funds 117, sorry, 117 positions. And some of the largest units in there are going to be your Aviation Unit, which has a budget of 8 million, your SWAT Unit, which has a budget of just over 7 million. And once again, they've been excelling with their performance measures. Number of SWAT deployments of high-risk warrant service, the target was 125. They had 178. A number of Special Operations Section's callouts, the target was 1,000, and they exceeded that with over 1,100. And the last service is the Patrol Support Service. We have in there $5.6 million, 28 funded positions. All of that is general funded. We have Central Buckings in there, and we have special events. And once again, they've been exceeding their performance measures. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move directly into questions, and we're going to start with Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you to the entire BPD team that is here tonight. Look, it is very clear that this is a different department than the one that I saw in front of me eight years ago when I started on the Baltimore City Council. This is a department that has improved its efficiency, its effectiveness, that is frankly just winning when it comes to the crime fight. And the numbers that the Commissioner read are pretty remarkable when we think about where we were just a few years ago. And I think it is important for the women and men of this department to hear from this City Council that the work you are doing matters and that these are some of the most prolific declines in violent crime we have seen as a city ever. That is a big deal, and as a city, we need to own it. And we still have a long way to go because it is my mission, it is our mayor's mission, and it is certainly this Commissioner's mission to make Baltimore the safest city in America. And that is what I strive, and I know you, sir, strive for us to be. And to echo your point as well, this is the result of many, many hands. I want to thank the women and men of BPD. I want to thank the mayor, the State's Attorney, our governor, who's been a huge supporter. I want to thank the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, all of the credible messengers, the GPRS partners. I want to thank our communities who have held us accountable. Frankly, I want to thank the advocates who showed up and said, "We need local control over our own police department here in the city of Baltimore." And so I am grateful to many, many people for the progress that I have seen. And it is my expectation that we are going to continue to make great progress with this department as we move forward. So with that, Commissioner, you touched on this. A lot of the theme of these hearings have been about vacancies and overtime. And I know you've been paying attention. So you alluded to this, but can you discuss how many aged vacancies, and by that I mean positions that have been vacant 18 months or longer, are included in the FY '26 budget?
Sure. It would probably be the majority of these vacancies. We have 492 sworn vacancies right now. So the majority of those have probably been vacant for about 18 months because we were on the downward trend. The issue with that is, I'm going to be different than my predecessor, which is Commissioner Harrison. He was my mentor, but I have a different opinion. I think we will fill these positions within the next three to five years. Because right now, by the end of the year, I think we're going to have 100 more cops than we have now. Because multiple things. Number one, the mayor and the city stepped up and gave the officers a really good contract last year that is keeping some of our men and women from retiring. Number two, we changed ad campaigns. We've got more hits. We have class sizes that are too big. We're returning away other agencies who want to come and go to our academy. So those are the things that we see less and less people leaving. In what is it, six short months, we picked up 47. And that was before we even changed to the new ad campaign. I think I said we had almost 400 in background. So we are in the, we are moving in the right path, on the right track. And then by the end of this year, we'll graduate, I think, right around 150 officers, right in that, right in that line. Between, and I don't mean the whole year, I mean between now and then, we'll graduate about 150. Now, they won't be on the street for about 10 weeks after they graduate, but by the early part of next year, I think we're going to be up close to where we only have about 350 vacancies. And it continues at that trend. In three or four years, we'll be up where we should be, which is 2,500. I'm actually that optimistic because we are getting a lot of, a lot of attention in the city because of what we're doing, because of the success that we're having. We have recruitment booth at Artscape. We're going to have Wanted Pride coming up. And they're getting a lot of attention from everywhere.
I sincerely appreciate your sense of optimism. And while I am truly hopeful, I am somewhat skeptical because we've had a very challenging time, not only recruiting, but retaining within this department. One of the things I'm interested in is attracting more young people from this city to go into law enforcement. We know that for a lot of young people, growing up in Baltimore, the relationship was pretty badly damaged. We have a whole consent decree to tell us why. But we are in a different era, and it is my hope that we are being far more intentional in how we recruit. As you know, this is a priority for the mayor and I, that we are building pathways and pipelines. So what are we doing to attract young people that are growing up in the city of Baltimore to want to become part of the police department?
And before I turn it over to DC NATO, I think we both had to admit, we didn't think we'd be talking about these record crime numbers two or three years ago. So in two or three years, I want to be, not be talking about vacancies. But one thing that I can tell you is every time we have a new academy class start, our leadership team goes up, and we talk to them. We ask them where they're from, why they chose Baltimore, why they chose law enforcement. Then we ask them something that nobody knows about them, just kind of an icebreaker. In the last two classes, I've had more people say they were from Baltimore, that they grew up in Baltimore, or that someone from BPD recommended that they come here. Now, I know they get incentives for that, but these are officers who are retired and aren't getting incentives. And even one other agency said, "If you want to learn and grow quick, go to Baltimore." And I know he's going to, the DC NATO is going to give you some numbers that our hiring from within the city is increasing. And that's part of the reason we have this junior cadet program. We start at 12 or 13, 17, 18, they can start. 18, they go in to be in a cadet. They stay in the cadet program until they hit 20 in six months, I believe it is. And then they go in to become a police officer. And their pension starts at the age of 18 when they become a cadet. So it's a pathway to stay right in law enforcement. Sometimes it won't be. That's just not going to be for them. Maybe they'll do something else. But it's something that we can get our young people in our schools to look at as law enforcement is something different. Now, I'll turn it over to DC NATO.
Good evening, Brian NATO, Deputy Commissioner for Resources and Accountability. So with the new campaign that we started this year, we received over 1,000 applications so far that come through. We vetted through those. Currently, we have almost 400 that are still in background going, along with the ones that we've already hired. What I would say, out of that, 36% of those are from the city, which is a fairly good number. We're trying to hover around 40, so 36 to 40 has been our number over the past two years. 30% of those are female, which is up. We were at 28%, now we're at 30. The agency overall is at 17.5 female, but the current application pool is 30% female. In addition, as the PC mentioned, we have two dozen cadets and 70 junior cadets. All of those folks are from the city.
How many multilingual folks?
Sorry?
How many multilingual folks?
I don't have, so we have 73% of our applicants are African-American. 14% are African-American females. That's the breakdown I have here. But if you, if you want further information, we can provide that at a later date.
That would be great. Just to get back to the data, yeah, if we could make that a committee request. I would love to know those numbers as well. Just want to be really intentional as our population becomes more multilingual, that we are supporting all of our communities and have a police force that looks and sounds the way our city does. Again, looking at the data that you've provided and that BBMR provided, the Baltimore Police Department incurred more than $51 million from the General Fund in overtime in calendar year 2023. Overtime increased to more than $64 million in calendar year 2024. And again, that's from the General Fund. Commissioner, I heard you in terms of improving recruitment and retention. I would like you to talk a little bit about what you are doing to curtail excessive overtime, as well as just an acknowledgement that this has been a challenge for our city for a long time. But as we mature, as Baltimore, as our council, as the department gets better, we need folks to stay in a budget. And we can't be passing budgets and then enabling unfettered overtime. If the dollars aren't right, we should be honest about it on the front end. We should be clear about how much overtime we're going to need so that it's not year-over-year council signing supplemental budgets to support on the back end overtime spending that was already spent.
Yeah, and a couple of things now. Let Chief Graham or whoever else wants to speak about it. One of the big things we've done, Workday has been a big help for us. It allows us to, the approval process has to go through a couple of steps before an officer can work overtime. The investigations, unfortunately, we have had, we've done a lot more with investigations. And what I mean there is that we are now investigating some things. Because our violent crime has dropped significantly, we're now investigating burglaries and to a point where we got officers taking fingerprints of stolen autos that was never something we've done. But this is allowing us to go to those lower offenses that are the reasons why people move out of the city, stealing the car, breaking into their house. Our clearance rate in burglaries is above the national average. We've reorganized our detective division. And of course, our homicide detectives, I'd put them up against anybody in the country, and they're working short. They think we're about 15 detectives short from where they should be. So every part of the organization, I look at it every single day, and right about every part of the organization is about 80% staffed to where we should be. So that means we're going to have some overtime. And then if you look at your officers that are on the street, about 25% of every single officer that's working one of those cars is on overtime because of the staffing shortages. And then you put in all these, one of the other things that we had is last year, the officers got about a 7%, 6% to 7% raise. It was only projected in about a 3% raise, so that added several millions of dollars to the budget. And then you get into, there's, something's very, very costly, and this is something that just can't be avoided. There's contractual obligations that allow our officers to have about 45% of the weekends off. So for example, when we have a big event on, we'll say Artscape on Memorial Day weekend, if we don't have enough cops, which we didn't, we have to force people to work on their day off. If we force them to work on their day off, that means that officer is making about $1,200 that day because it's their time plus their time and a half, plus they get their, a whole day back, which most of them elect to take in an overtime. So those events, in order to keep the city safe, we have to staff them. And because we're only about 80% staffed, 20% to 25% on the weekends and every event that we have where we have to cancel people to work is overtime. And then you get to the downtown deployment. Almost every one of those officers you see at the Harbor and at Fell's Point and Fed Hill, those are almost all overtime officers because we have to take our administrative officers out of the office on Monday, from Saturday and Sunday, put them on the street because our regular officers that are, the normal patrol and DAT teams have to continue to patrol the districts. So that's where our budget, that's where you'll see a difference when we start to get more and more staffing because it'll be less overtime. to get more and more staffing because it'll be less overtime, less canceled penalty pay, and we have a lot of checks and balances, and we've made some real progress over the last couple of months. Shawna, did you have something?
Thank you. So I have specific numbers of projections, so last year's for hours for overtime, and we spent nine hundred and fourteen thousand hours. This year, we're projecting to be just under that by eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand hours, and it, it does correlate with our vacancies. If you actually take the hours of our vacancies and put that into overtime, the numbers do correlate. Obviously, you know, we're filling positions, we expect to be eighty-plus just on our sworn staffing this year, and sixty-plus on our professional staffing. So as those bodies are fully trained and out on the streets, you know, we will start to see a reduction in overtime. There's been a lot of controls we put in place, even a dashboard for commanders that gives them the insight, it will show them the high earners of overtime, it will show them who worked the overtime, it will show them the penalty pay or the canceled H days that the police commissioner used to mention, so it gives them a lot of insight. One of the things we're working with this-
And just real quick, I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off, just talk to, who is holding them accountable? Like, it's good to have a dashboard, but talk to me about how you are holding folks accountable so that it doesn't, you know, it's cool to be on a dashboard, but if no one is saying, hey, you're pushing the limit?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. So we have been focusing at ComStat, in the beginning of the year, we were focusing on patrol, we were literally drilling into the rosters and who showed up, who they had on overtime, and what they were doing, and then we were cross-referencing it with the overtime and saying, okay, were these people meeting the constant? If they were meeting the constant, we understand that, we have to answer nine-one-one calls. If they weren't meeting the constant, maybe they were doing crime suppression, or maybe they were doing some of the other activity, why were we doing that activity and what was the return on investment? So we really focused on patrol at the beginning of the year, and towards the latter part of the year, we've been focusing on CID. A, a perfect example, I'll pick, pick on DDSD, you know, they started drilling into their overtime, really looking at their high earners, their high super org owners, really clarify, when I say super orgs, I'm sorry, Workday is configured, figured in supervisory organizations, so you can see the sergeant over a team, and then you can see how much money that team is spending, so that's what I meant by super orgs. And also reclarifying the, when overtime can be used, in the last pay period, they had a massive reduction of about thirty-six percent.
So for, I will say for in reference to the CID side, the investigative as well as the patrol, you know, not only through the ComStat process are we using, ComStat is a mechanism of audit and oversight.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt you, can you just state, state your name-
I'm sorry.
-and your position, please?
Sure.
Then, continue.
Deputy Commissioner Kevin Jones, Operations. So we implemented a series of robust measures aimed at reducing overtime expenditures, enhancing, enhancing financial accountability and improving oversight within the respective commands. These efforts in the direct response to the agency's broader objective of ensuring overtime is used judiciously and in alignment with operational necessity and budgetary constraints. I will say that for this agency, we are focusing on information given to the officers in reference to specific guidelines of when they can and cannot use non-discretionary overtime, total overtime expenditures against budget, activity code breakdowns, justification for discretionary overtime, hold up, high overtime utilized as sixty-four plus hours, and a scorecard audit and randomization that is overseen by both Lieutenant Colonel Holman and Lieutenant Colonel Hershurza. I will also say similarly that, that there has been an implementation of all ninety-fives and pre-approvals, cost centers and detailed task descriptions, daily and weekly overtime reports that are submitted up through the commanders to the executives in reference to oversight and audit. I will say all overtime must be approved, pre-approved now and documented, including supervisory and timestamps, non-discretionary overtime must be tied to urgent investigative needs with full task description and complaint numbers, incorrect activity or cost centers entries disqualify future overtime until such cost codes are corrected efficiently. Only one supervisor may respond to routine incidents unless exigent circumstances are justified. This is just a, a small host of the oversight and audit accountabilities that we're putting in place in reference to being financial stewards.
I appreciate that. We, we, we need to rein the excessive overtime in. I understand, again, the situation that we're in, but we need to recruit, we need to right-size, we need to civilianize, we need to do all the things that this department is capable of doing. And I'm going to close, but I'll just say there were two things in the last council that happened. One is that Councilman Burnett passed a bill around apprenticeship, he was met with a lot of pushback, I'm not really clear why, but we talked to the fire department, and my sense is that it has not gone great so far. I'm expecting and hoping to see improvement in terms of, and I heard from you, Commissioner, embracing the apprenticeship program. Number two is that we gained local control of BPD, and I thank Councilman Conway, the mayor's team, our folks in Annapolis, your team, everyone. Baltimore needed to control its own police department, no other big municipality should be denied an opportunity to control their own local police. But with that comes increased accountability, and it is this council's intent to continue to hold the department accountable. We are truly grateful and appreciative of the gains that you all have made. It is nothing less than extraordinary, the level of violence reduction that we're seeing in our city, but accountability means accountability all the way through. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, as a, as a quick follow-up before I get to the next person, the accountability measures that you spoke about, when did you say that they started? Again, when would, when would they implement it?
So what I will say is because of not only Workday, when we saw that ourselves, that the scale was leading up, we started him probably a year or so ago in trying to implement him. As we've gotten better in the process, we started having robust conversations within the divisions themselves, and then realized that it had to be a broader conversation. So we then started bringing it into our ComStat process. Bringing it into the ComStat process, we then evaluated it with relentless follow-up and assessment and realized that we needed to create a dashboard that was workable, and then we had to figure out where was the misinformation and disinformation in reference to the commander's ability to see certain things. There was an expectation that they were able to see parts of the Workday system and overtime that he did not have access to. So then we had to develop, okay, we can't hold people accountable for something that they themselves cannot see. So then that was the next iteration of it. Now, where we are now is each district that is brought up to ComStat instead of, sometimes we'll go broad in reference to, sometimes Shawna and her team will see things that as an agency we are having problems with, whether it's cost codes or activity codes. But then with the two districts that are up for ComStat, it is a deep dive into those specific two districts of where they are, how they're spending their money and their staff.
Okay, so, so we, so you started to implement the measures of the first iteration a year ago, and then you went to the district level?
No, what I'm saying is it was probably about a year ago, maybe more.
About a year ago?
And then we started it with the district level. We walked, worked at each independent non-districts of where they were seeing their budgetary issues, where was their staffing, where was their concerns, where was there having to be special events oversight?
Okay. When did you start at the district level?
We've always had an, an oversight and audit for overtime. As it has progressed through the generations, we've become more and more precise creating dashboards, but it is always a conversation we've had, we've just ramped up the conversation.
Okay. The amount of numbers, the number, give me a second, Commissioner, or give me a few seconds, please. The overtime numbers that you stated when you said, hey, there is a decline, correct me if I'm wrong, I might have taken it down, taken it down incorrectly, nine hundred and fourteen thousand hours, and then you said we went to eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand hours, and you said within the last pay period, you guys were maybe-
Yes, so we, we have decreased in the last pay period, and one of the examples I was giving was a CID example, so the district detectives, their overtime in pay period twenty-four dropped by about thirty-six percent.
How, how, how long ago was that again?
So that was this last pay period.
This last one?
So we, we check every pay period, we drill into it, and to answer the question you used, asked, we were always looking at the districts at ComStat, but we've now taken the extra step where my team literally looks at people to people and says, was this person doing the constant and filling the constant, or was this person doing something else? And, and really drilling in at my level to the people, not just having the commanders do that, because obviously the commanders are to do that too.
Okay. My, you did, you, you answered my question, it was a year ago, and I heard all the implementations that you guys were going through, I just wanted to make sure I had these numbers right on my paper. Only because, look, the thirty-six percent drop within a last, within a last pay period, that's significant to me. But when I see the nine hundred and fourteen thousand, just going, when you just told me nine fourteen to eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, that's not a lot.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not, I think that the, the issue is last year, last fiscal year, we were able to absorb it, and this fiscal year with cost of contract, the FOP contract, and some other things with, all our COVID vehicles came in at once, so we had to upfit all those vehicles, so we had things that necessarily we wouldn't have normally had, so we couldn't absorb the extra cost of the overtime this year.
Okay, because we just don't want to be back here next year, and then you guys are just saying, hey, we only, we went from eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand hours to eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand hours, we want to hear something relative to what you said from last pay period, which was a significant drop, like thirty-six percent. Somebody got my, my mama ring, I know that's right. Okay, yeah, we want to hear something significant, like that thirty, like, like the, the Commissioner saying, hey, we told you our crime was going to go down, and y'all weren't, y'all was laughing at us. I want to believe you when you tell me that these vacancy numbers are going to go down, like, like we want to be with you, but I'm going to get to the next question, but I want you to know we, I'm not there yet, though, but I want to be. I do. We're going to go to, to Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to be here with you today, thank you. Look, I, I've just got my old pet things, sorry. Aaron, Andy, thank you for responding so quickly. A couple of weeks ago, I sent you a request about all of the police-initiated tows that the city has done in the last year. You sent it to me, I reviewed the data. Of the eighty-one hundred vehicles that BPD initiated towing of in the last year, seventy-three hundred of them were towed by just two companies. Of the fifty-two hundred towed on the east side, thirty-one hundred were towed to properties owned by that company, three out of every five. Most of them towed to a lot that is less than one mile from the city yard that they were supposed to have been towed to. This is illegal. This is not supposed to happen legally. Whereas on the west side, the two, out of the two thousand vehicles that the other dominant tower towed, only one in sixteen rather than three in five. Only one in sixteen went to that company's lot, the rest of them did actually go to Pulaski where they're supposed to go. This is also illegal, but there's a huge disparity about, between what's happening on the east side and what's happening on the west side. For the nearly, I have a request here, for the nearly or roughly thirty-seven hundred vehicles that were not towed to the city yard or BPD, because there were a certain number towed to BPD, but i- in, in any case, they're not supposed to go anywhere except for where an owner might tell you to take them or a city property. For the nearly thirty-seven hundred vehicles that were not towed to a city yard but were instead towed to facilities owned by the towing contractor, for each one, did we pay for each of these tows? And did we receive any record of what those towing companies were paid by the vehicle owner or their insurer when they released the vehicle to somebody? And did we exercise any controls over what those towing companies were allowed or did charge to those vehicle owners or their insurance companies? We have very high insurance rates in Baltimore City, and we are driving thousands of vehicles into the hands of people who, from what I know, we have no controls over what they are charging to insurance companies, potentially driving up significantly insurance costs in Baltimore City, and all of that money should be coming to us, not to those towing contractors. And again, it is illegal for those vehicles to be towed to those lots, not to the city yard. So that's my request, did we pay each one of them? Did we get any record of what they were paid when they released the vehicle, and did we exercise any controls over them? I'd like to see that for each of those cases where it didn't come to a city-owned property. And I've sent this also in writing, I just wanted to put it here on the record, so everybody else is aware that this practice really needs to stop, it's not fair to anybody, including the city.
Councilman, we did receive, obviously I gave you the initial spreadsheet, you were able to dive into it. Today, we received your email to CFO Graham and obviously myself and Andy about that, and we're definitely going to get you the information that you are requesting, but part of it, you know, I know you mentioned it, but just so that we're clear here, if an owner decides that a tow truck arrives and they want that, that towed to that lot, that's something that, you know, BPD can't interfere with. But I do hear your point, and we're going to get you the information. And I also know that you were interested in the app that we started that actually went live today, and that's also going to be really helpful, Arturo went live today, but-
Yeah, a lot of work has gone into getting Arturo live.
And we really appreciate, you've always been, you know, very helpful in that regard, so we will get you the information, and we do understand your concerns.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You are very welcome, you did go over that sixty-second, so.
I know, I'm a liar, what can I say?
You know, it's a Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, thank you, Commissioner and your team for your continued dedication in keeping our residents safe and secure in our communities. So I'm switching gears a little bit and talk about, the last hearing discussion we had was with the Department of Transportation, and we spent a lot of time on capital projects and traffic calming, and partnerships with other agencies. And I bring this up because, as we speak, I have a kind of an emergency situation on Liberty Heights in Oakford, and in my conversation earlier today with DOT, I had mentioned that accidents happen at this intersection at least every one serious every two weeks. Well, as I was speaking, there was an accident last night, and then there was one maybe a couple of hours ago. And to me, and this has been going on for the last two years, an accident at that intersection, and I'm learning, well, we've been through the process of eventually getting a traffic light there, but there is a strong process, and it's going to take a little longer for that because there's nothing there. So understanding the process of getting, you know, through the conduit system and trying to get that built, they are going to put a speed camera there, but because of the dire emergency, I guess, my question would be, how do you partner with transportation with things like this, especially since we're, our city is going through a lot of revitalization, economic development, it's just a lot going on throughout our city, and it seems like there needs to be some strategies that the police department can put in place to help increase traffic calming enforcement, especially in emergency- put in place to help increase traffic calming enforcement, especially in emergency situations like this particular one. Can we assign someone there? There, the camera is supposed to be put there this Friday, but this is Tuesday. And if we're having two accidents in less than 24 hours, that's a big concern of what is happening there. And there was a major, you know, this is near a school, two churches, the fire department, four council members share Liberty Heights anyway, and the council president had mentioned something earlier with DOT as well, that we have a lot of people coming in and out of our main corridors, not just Liberty Heights, Northern Parkway, Charles Street. I mean, it's just a lot of different tra, high-traffic areas, and the Department of Transportation needs help. And then that's where I see partnerships. So I guess the question is twofold. How can you help with this particular emergency? And moving forward, how can we, you plan and do strategies? And we can't say anymore staffing. We have to figure out actual ways to help in emergency situations.
I stood up because it was easier than looking around my podium at you. Yeah, it's, we can, we can part, we partnership with DOT all the time. They help us a great deal with their traffic enforcement officers. But this is something we can do with our district. They can, they can hit that intersection. What I, what I warn, though, and I warn this every time someone asks for traffic enforcement, is that traffic enforcement means everybody gets pulled over, that if they pull you over, you're probably going to get a ticket. So it issues, I did this when I was the major in the northeast, and the first person we pulled over was one of the people that complained about the intersection, and they didn't want a ticket. So it was, so I give that precursor, but no, if any, we did this last year, if you remember last year, we had a huge increase in our fatal accidents. We looked at our top 10 intersections, and we started doing traffic enforcement at those intersections. The main one was on Enzer Street in the eastern. So we can send officers up there to do traffic enforcement, because I can tell you from where I live, the speed camera's not going to slow them down for a while, because it's going, they'll see the lights, and then they'll realize they already got the ticket, so, but they'll, they'll still, eventually it'll get the message, and then when the red light goes in. But we can go up and do some traffic enforcement. I have a, my motors unit can do some traffic enforcement there, so we can work with DOT, but for the most part, it would be us with the traffic enforcement until they get the traffic calming devices in. And also, I want to thank you, just to let you know, we do have 12 auxiliary officers. I know you probably thought I forgot about our conversation well over a year ago about those.
Yes.
We didn't forget about it. We're still trying to use them.
And what are you going to do with those auxiliary?
They help us with parades and different things, that we can put them out there to assist us.
Awesome, just to refresh the memory of the rest of the council. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have two questions, one with a follow-up. So Commissioner, can you please give me a breakdown of the number of youth and adults arrested for stolen autos, robberies, and guns last year, and so far this year, if you have it?
I'll let my chief from Community and Youth, Lisa Reynolds, speak about that.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Lisa Reynolds. I am chief of Youth and Community Partnerships. I'm going to ask you if you wouldn't mind just repeating so I get the right offenses that I'm going to give to you.
Yes, certainly. The breakdown on the number of youth and adults arrested for stolen autos, robberies, and guns.
Sure.
Last year and up to date this year, if you have it.
Absolutely. So robbery arrests in 2024 was 1,009 total, with 189 being juvenile offenses. In 2025, robberies to date are 362 total, with 81 being juveniles. Auto theft arrests were 715 total in 2024, and 194 of those were juvenile. And in 2025, we are year-to-date, 283 total, 72 being juvenile. For handgun arrests, 2024 were 1,631 total, 61 of those were juvenile. And in 2025, year-to-date, we're at 670 total, and 39 of those are juvenile.
Okay, I wasn't expecting those numbers to be that way based on the narrative that we see in the media. Question, does the department feel youth are getting arrested at a higher, this is the follow-up, at a higher volume in committing more serious offenses? And if so, can you please provide the data for that?
So I will say that year-to-date, we have 136 paper-referred youth to Department of Juvenile Services. Those are youth that are usually misdemeanor offenses and requests that come to juvenile booking. We have had 246 so far this year. Those are felony arrests. I would, when the right services are put in place, we find that the youth don't reoffend. I think what the department is facing right now, and Colonel Herzog spoke to at the Public Safety Hearing Committee meeting, is that through our work internally and with our partners at Monty at the State's Attorney's Office, we're finding that there's a handful, we're calling that about 50 youth, that are repeat offenders. What I mean by that is they're getting rearrested, the chronicity of that arrest is increasing as well as the escalation in offenses. So what we're trying to do is work with our partners to try to better understand what services they need and whether those are community-based, or if we can recommend in our, in our meetings that we're having with DJS and what we are relaying to the State's Attorney when they are going to court, that some of these youth, you know, require a higher level of service.
I appreciate that answer. As someone who's a big proponent for the mayor's office, African-American male engagement, I think it's very important that we view our, our youth, men, male and female, as folks that we can put on the right path, instead of just going straight to punishment. So I do appreciate that, the effort, the effort and the intentionality in making sure that we identify those that are, that are being arrested repeatedly or are the perpetuators of crime, and giving them pathways to success or trying to give them the resources. So I do commend you on that. So thank you, that was my first question. My second question has to do with the apprenticeship. And so I talked to, we had a conversation a couple of days ago with the fire department, and they, I was disappointed with where they were when it came to, when it comes to the apprenticeship program. My predecessor, Councilman Renette, put a lot of time and effort in it. I was in his office, we put a lot of time and effort in it, and year after year, we were continuously disappointed by the lack of, or the willingness to participate in the program. And the intent was to make sure that our young men and women are finding career pathways into BPD and BFCD in whatever way that they want, whether it's at a desk, on the front lines. We need more people from this city to work in these departments. My question to you is, I'm looking at the line item, and there, I did not see a line item or explicit allocation for the public safety apprenticeship program. Would this fall under service number 635? And can you tell me where we are with recruitment and the status of this program as established?
Yeah, I'm going to turn it right back to Lisa Reynolds again. It would fall right under, right under her, but we, that, we take that very seriously. That was a program, it was called the Explorers when I was in the northeast, and we used those young people to mentor with our police officers. And when COVID came, it all went away. We started at ground zero with nobody, and now we have them in all nine districts. But Lisa can give you more of the numbers.
Good eve, good evening again. The junior cadet program, we are now at, I believe, 68 youth that are participating. We have four districts that are up to capacity at nine youth. We have youth representing 20 high schools in the Baltimore City area. We are working closely with the buddies program to make sure that the curriculum that we deliver is standard across, so they receive weekly, come three weeks, they're off one week, and they have nutrition and health. We do employment and education, as well as public safety. So what we're, what we also do on the fourth week, once they have off, we have a coordinated event where they might visit forensics, they might go to training academy. And what we're actually looking to do is tie in our cadet program and get them to come speak to the junior cadets. So as the Commissioner mentioned, serves as like a passage, right? Go from hopefully junior cadet to cadet. The other thing is working with other agencies like Project Numa to get the younger kids to learn and want to become junior cadets.
That is music to my ears. Project Numa, Damian Cooper is not only a great person, but he also, we attend the same church. So I have a committee request. Could you provide, and I asked the same, and I already provided the information to MoGR and Madam Chair, for the, as stated in the ordinance, 29, 29A dash 5, the annual report for fiscal year '23, '24, and '25. And if you guys need the actual bill, we can provide a copy to both you, Ms. Murphy, and Commissioner Wardley. But that, the committee request is for the annual report based on the public, the apprenticeship program for fiscal year '23, '24, and '25.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. And I just want to publicly say thank you for being intentional and trying to uplift and give young black men and women of Baltimore City and Brown a pathway into BPD in whatever facet they choose. I just know that representation matters. It is important. And the same way that I was a little stern with the fire department, I'm going to give you all the kudos and, and thanks for being intentional on the work, listening, and we're starting to see, just with your leadership, how things are shaking out, and it's becoming fruitful. And I'm very appreciative of you being the Commissioner and you really investing in this program. So thank you, Commissioner, and thank you.
So it's all the team that's around me. And I always bring it up to, at every interview, because we, inevitably, we talk about our young people, our juveniles. But you're talking about, I believe the number is right around 60,000 kids between the age of 10 and 19, and we're talking about maybe 100 to 200 of them. Everybody else is, is, not everybody's doing what they're supposed to be, but we have a lot of young people that are doing exceptional things in this city. Unfortunately, the small number that aren't are the ones that do need the attention to get on the right path, and we're trying to do that.
Commissioner, thank you, to you and your, your team. I was very pleased with the work that the police department and the detectives did, the three arrests after the mass shooting on Greenmount and Venable. That was really, really good work. I don't know all the details, I don't want to know all the details, but the fact that is that that's, you know, obviously, you know, there's still some work to be done on that corner, and we're working hard on all, all fronts. So I appreciate that. I know that we talked a little bit about this on email, but that day, that shooting, that day, was just really horrifying for the community, but also very stressful for me. There was no PIO on site, and I worked with the media, I know how to do it, but I was also comforting residents and business owners. And so, you know, that was not how that should have gone. And so I want to make sure that that doesn't happen again to any of my colleagues or me, because, you know, I, who, I mean, I was very direct and discreet and tried to, you know, I didn't know many details, so I didn't say anything. But, you know, when we're on scene, we're there to comfort constituents, victims, families, businesses, whoever. And so having to then deal with the media was not one of the things that I needed to deal with. Can you talk a little bit about that, making sure that's not going to happen again?
Yeah, it won't happen again. It was, I'll, I'll take the blame for that. I was out of town, and, but it was my fault. I should have made sure we had people there, so, but it won't happen again.
It was a very stressful time.
You need to like talking to the media?
I'd love talking to the media, but not in those situations, when there's so many other things that we have to do. So I appreciate that. The second thing is, I wanted to just touch base a little bit on where we are relative to the public integrity work. So the outcome that you have on page 70, service 628, under the Public Integrity Bureau, is that the number, the outcome of the number of misconduct complaints per 100 officers kind of hides the number, actually, of what the misconduct cases are, right? Because if you just take patrol, this isn't exactly accurate, but if you take the number of officers in patrol, and you put the math together, that's 800 complaints per year. That's actually a lot of complaints. Now, I realize it's farther down from where we were, I get that, but that means it's still substantial. So what I'm going to ask for is a little bit about what those complaints are, in terms of, I get that some of them are like, the star is in the wrong place on the uniform, to, you know, use of force, which is, you know, the worst part. So can you get us information about, the, can you give us a breakdown of the type of misconduct that we're seeing still here? And I know we've revamped how we're doing it, but I'm still very interested in this. Can you give us the number of the, of complaints and what the breakdown in the type? But I also want to know what are repeats? Because if we have continued repeats in terms of officers doing the same things or multiple things, then that's an issue that we have to have flagged. So is that possible that you can get for me? That'll be a formal request.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, we can get that for you. We have, and it's actually in the, I believe it's in the pilot phase, we have an early intervention system. We had one in the past, but it wasn't the greatest. Now, we've spent a lot of time trying to get this to where we want, so it automatically picks up. We have data that actually picks up and alerts us to the officers who may be at risk or who may need additional training. So we've got a system that's, that's coming into play very shortly for everyone that allow us to do that electronically.
So what does that mean? I mean, is that, you know, if somebody makes a comment, then somebody will say something and put it online? What does that look like?
So what the system is going to do, ma'am, is going to take complaints coming in, it's going to take supervisor notes, it's going to take, you know, whether the people are sick, not out sick, anything that's entered into the system, it's going to pull it all and look at it, and through a generated program, flag people that are concerning. It then gives it to our health and wellness team, they look at it, make a determination if it's concerning. If it is, they decide where it goes to. It may go to PIB to investigate, it may go to the supervisor, but it's an early system because right now, we're doing it manually. And with the volume of officers we have, that can be a little bit troubling. Plus, we have no central repository for all of those notes right now, so this is going to grab all of those notes and put them all together and do that analysis. As to your first question about complaints, you know, the majority of our complaints are, we really divide them into serious misconduct or minor misconduct. The majority of our complaints are minor misconduct, which is a good thing. Our use of forces are down 51% in the agency, our police vault shootings are down 82%. Like, we are moving in the right direction, but we still have complaints. What is part of those complaints? There is an ability, because we opened up a portal, an online portal under the state law, so people can file complaints. You don't necessarily have to file a complaint with a name, you can do it anonymously. It has increased the anonymous complaints, which are somewhat challenging to investigate if there's not enough detail. We prefer people actually give their name, et cetera, we can reach out to them, get the details. It takes us a lot longer to do those cases. A lot of those cases have to do with the public, which are ACC cases, which is why it takes longer to get to the ACC, because it takes longer to do them. We can't just shut them out because on face value, it looks like nothing, we still have to do our due diligence. So, excuse me?
It's Administrative Charging Committee.
Oh, yeah, ACC is Administrative Charging Committee, sorry. You just did their budget, so I'm sure that's on the top of your mind. So, so that is one of the things we're going for. When you ask for a breakdown of cases, I just caution what you're going to get, because they're in buckets. For instance, you might get neglected duty. That could be anything from a minor neglected duty to a serious. We don't- We don't, we don't have a system that allows us to break them down into specifics, because I, I could tell you out of 100 cases, there's 100 different cases. And so they're in categories like that, which I, I don't know if it's going to give you, it's not going to give you a level of depth in those cases. Now, I do know the ACC is doing a report to detail out those cases. That hasn't come out yet, I haven't seen it, but when it does come out, that would probably be more level, they have more staff to do that. You know, our staff is trying to do the cases so we can get them to the ACC. And also, we also have the DRC, right? So anything that's not dealing with the public, we also have to deal with, and it goes to the Discipline Review Committee, which is internal. So I would say their report is probably going to be more useful to you, as opposed to a report that's going to say serious or minor, or it might give you a category without a specific.
Well, I would, I'd be interested in both, because after I look at it, I can certainly ask you additional questions offline, in terms of what we're, what we're seeing. And again, the reason to, to see that is just to, you know, where we've been, right? And where we're going, in terms of the work that is being done on the training side, on the, you know, all of that. And so, and every so often, we get complaints, and then we report them on behalf of our constituents. So I just, I'm just curious as to how we're doing it. Obviously, the judge feels one way in terms of what you're doing, because I think you've reformed the system. But I still think it's something that we, as, now, we have oversight, I want to just make sure we're going in the right direction. So I'll, I'll be interested in both of those reports.
Councilwoman Ramos, can you restate your, your requests?
Yes.
For council services, specifically, they needed also a timeframe.
Yep. So I'll follow up in an email, but I was interested in looking at the last fiscal year, the, under misconduct, and breaking that out by type of misconduct, and what, if there's officers that have been repeaters, not the names, just the incidents where that was a repeat. And then also the report that DC NAD out talked about relative to the, the ACC. And I'll, like I said, I'll follow up with an email. And in terms of timeframe, I guess, you know, by the end of the month.
Could we do that by calendar year? Because we rerun our, by calendar year?
Sure, 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 sure. Yep, absolutely, uh huh. So it would be 2024, and then for six months of this year, does that make sense? Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you guys, good to see you, Commissioner. I'll very briefly appreciate all the great work you guys are doing and the great progress that we've had across the city. It's, nothing short of inspiring, so I'm, I'm really happy to see the progress we've made. I won't belabor the issue, because you guys see a lot of me, but you guys know how I feel about the success we've had to date. I want to focus on the Public Integrity Bureau, specifically focusing around, we were just talking about it, the PAB, the ACC, and that process. I know there were a couple of changes made recently. Can you tell me, give me a little background on what that means for you guys and the amount of time that you have to review, to review cases? I note here in our performance measures that the percent of investigations completed within 180 days, we were looking at 25% in 2024. I have a couple of thoughts about what that may mean for, for how we, you know, think appropriately, but I'm, I'm curious what the changes mean and how the changes at the state level should inform what we should be thinking about at the city level so far as resources for you guys to effectively meet a reasonable deadline. So please.
Sure. Good evening, Councilman. My name is Ulfemi Akani, I'm the Chief of the Public Integrity Division. So in terms of the change of the law, one of the things that I would say it has helped us to do is to now hire civilian investigators, because under the old law, which is the LUBR, Okay, so under the old law, which is the LUBR, when non-sworn personnel cannot investigate sworn personnel. So with the MPA, now we are able to have civilian investigators, you know, assist with investigations, which has been very helpful with the progress of our cases and, you know, the timeline of the cases. Now, I would say that irrespective of the change of the law, because of the staffing issues like we've talked about, that has still been a serious issue for us in terms of getting the cases completed, because, you know, PIB is required to have a particular staff strength. Now, have we been there? No. You know, we've had people, you know, get promoted out of PIB, but we've not been able to fill those positions, because again, you know, there's a requirement in, in the department before you're able to go to a specialized unit. And so also for PIB, we require certain skills for people to be able to come to PIB, because you have to be able to have those investigatory skills to be able to, to do the cases. So primarily, I would say, you know, the staffing is like the issue that we've had with getting the cases done, but the civilian investigators, since they joined, they've been able to help with, with that as well.
Got it. So what I'm hearing here is that we now have additional ability to have non-sworn individuals help us with the investigation.
That is correct.
Which is helpful. But we are still having trouble filling some positions within the Public Integrity Bureau to help us move things along more quickly, and that's just a challenge we're just living with at, at the moment. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes, yes, that is correct. So that, that is one aspect of it, but also, when the investigations are completed and they've gone through the supervisory review, there's a portion of it that has to go to PIB Legal to review those cases for legal sufficiency as well, before they move along to the ACC. So that's another, you know, bottleneck, because right now, we have one Chief of PIB Legal and two attorneys assisting with that. But with the volume of the cases that we have, you know, they, you know, that's, especially with, again, even when, if we get the cases completed on time, with the volume of the cases, and just the personnel at, you know, for PIB Legal, that's still a bottleneck for us to get those cases to the ACC.
I appreciate that, thank you. Does this budget at all, it's unclear, because I think everything's kind of looped in with the PIB and the budget, but does it at all add additional support for this unit?
I should mention that we are, we are down 20% in PIB. We are down 20% across the agency, we, you know, CID takes that, patrol takes that. We have to spread the losses around, which is why we've had such a push on hiring and retention in the past year, obviously because we need to get those numbers back up. Are there qualified people to fill those positions in the agency? Yes. Can we take them? No, because then it's going to create a vacancy somewhere else. So, you know, the, the PC, DC Jones, and I, we sit and discuss, where is the most effective way to spread the, the joy? And it's, we've decided it's across the board for the most part, so that's where it is. I will say with the increase in, in recruitment, the number's going up, we're hoping over the next year, I predict three years, he's more optimistic, three to five, that we will be back where we need to be, and those losses that are missing in PIB, also CID, patrol, we will have filled back.
I appreciate it, thank you. I, I think the, the kind of major point here is we are making huge strides in reducing crime across the city, but I, I think there was a recent report that came out from the Able Foundation that spoke about that relationship between the police department and the community, and I believe that this process, the Police Accountability Board, the ACC, and the Public Integrity Bureau, that sort of accountability level, direct accountability for officers when they do overstep their boundaries, for people to feel that those issues are actually being addressed is really, really important to, to making sure that they trust our officers again. We're making huge strides, and I think everyone is happy to see that. But there is still a relationship piece here that needs to happen, some of that's community policing, and some of that is pure accountability. And so whatever we can do to make sure that this system works well, I think will bode well for us in further cultivating that relationship in our communities that had historically been overpoliced, or maybe we had, had a heavy hand in those communities in the past. So I want to make sure, you know, we, we talk about these issues a lot, and you guys have been absolutely phenomenal, and I, I'm sure will continue to be so, but I do want to do everything we can to make sure that when folks have complaints, that those complaints do get their due diligence, and they're done on an appropriate timeline. So appreciate you, thank you for walking us through it all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to draw our attention to Service 623, the Criminal Investigation Division. I see there, there's a new Homeland Security activity, which is called out in the first, in the first bullet point there, at the bottom of the page, under Major Operating Budget Items. Would somebody be able to share with us what the role of this new, this new unit, this new activity would be? Just break it down for us a little bit.
And, and I'm just going to clarify, it's, it's not new, it just changed services, but I'll turn it over to the operations so they can answer your question.
It's not, what, what we have is, we had, we do have some officers in the federal task force, but Homeland Security Investigations, I'll let the Colonel or the Lieutenant Colonel who's coming up behind me to talk about it. I think that federal task force, we only got like two people in there.
Good evening, Lieutenant Colonel Velte. Some of what you're seeing also is part of the Commissioner's restructuring throughout the organization, which is basically centralizing intelligence under one uniform command, trying to break down silos and making the information flow a little quicker, inform deployments and threat assessments quicker. You know, at Homeland Security, it is a constant threat assessment of citywide events, gatherings. There are meetings where we don't just talk about what we are seeing here in Baltimore, but on a national level, and how we think those may translate into threats or protests or anything of that nature in our jurisdiction. It's kind of a conglomerate of everybody, even, even nationally, to get on the same page with intelligence, to get in front of things that may impact us here.
I appreciate that. I'm just looking at the, right, because it listed, I, I guess because of just the, the restructure that you were talking about, it didn't list any financials for fiscal '24, '25, but this time through is 3 million. But that's, that represents staff and activities that were already taking place, they're just housed in a new place.
Yes, sir.
There's no additional, any mission or anything like that?
That's correct.
All right, very good. I think that's what, the, the one question I had there, so I appreciate that. My second question has to do with, with data security. So I really appreciate the way that, and the work of the Baltimore Police Department as partners, in particular when communities in my district and around the city have been more anxious and concerned with the presence of federal law enforcement, especially on immigration, immigration enforcement. I really appreciate that alongside the support from Mayor's Office, that Baltimore Police Department does not collaborate on, on immigration matters. I want to share that while agencies themselves don't share information, there is a concern and a question about how potentially technology partners of the department, if they're being held to the same data privacy requirements. So for example, in June 2024, the Board of Estimates approved a contract with Computer Square Incorporated, and per the BPD website, it says, "The contract will improve the department's ability to standardize information sharing with allied state and federal crime prevention partners and comply with all applicable state and federal regulations." Can you share which federal crime prevention partners is data being shared with, and does BPD have a privacy policy in place with CSI or any other similar companies that limits their data sharing to only the services that they are contracted to provide?
I'm Derek Canton, I'm the Chief Technology Officer for the Police Department. Would you mind asking your question again?
Absolutely. It was lengthy, so I'll just, I'll simply say this, there are strong privacy protections in place relative to people's personal information not being shared with federal law enforcement. And I really appreciate BPD's policies and the Mayor's leadership on this matter. There's one contract in particular that was from last June with Computer Square Incorporated that mentions that the contract is supposed to improve the department's data sharing with federal law enforcement among, among other folks. And so the question is, can you share which federal crime prevention partners is data being shared with, either through that contract or through other similar contracts? And does BPD have a privacy policy in place with CSI or similar contractors that limits their data sharing to only the services they are contracted to provide?
Answering the second part of your question first, we do have agreements in place with all of our contractors regarding the data that is shared. We typically do not share PII. Statistical information we can share, but as far as PII or things that are directly related to investigations, it's pretty limited. As it relates to what is directly being shared with CSI, what that agreement is, I'd have to take a look at that and get back to the Council about it.
Sure, and, and I think the, the first part of the question, I appreciate that clarification too. The first part of the question was, which, I mean, because the language in the contract, information sharing with allied state and federal crime prevention partners. So who are those federal crime prevention partners if, if, if somebody was able to share kind of what, what the back and forth is?
So HIDA would be one of them. MCAC?
So MCAC would be the Maryland Coordination Center. We do coordinate with them in reference to local information that has a broader public safety impact, so that would be one of the agencies. What, what they're trying to do with MCAC, it's the Maryland Coordination Analysis Center, they're trying to get all of the agencies throughout the state to be able to share data. We, we do share, we actually have a detective sergeant embedded with MCAC. They give us a lot of support, the Governor's Office, MCAC has given us a lot of support, especially with these statewide events. But that's mainly what the information sharing is. A lot of the arrest data, that's all owned by the state, because it goes through CBIF and Juvenile, the Juvenile Facility. But we share very little with the federal partners, other than just numbers, or during the investigations, they will share, we have detectives embedded in, in HIDA, FBI, Homeland Security, we have all the federal partners, we do have detectives embedded in there. They do share somewhat of the information, but it's, it's all part of their MOUs that we can and can't share. And one thing that, I think I know where you're, you're going with it, one, one thing Homeland Security has told us, they, they do not and will not get local law enforcement involved with administrative warrants with, for immigration. So I think that's what you, you were headed to with, so even if we do share information with them, we do a lot of other things with them, like the PRIXNIS. We had to coordinate with the PRIXNIS, because we had people coming from all over the world for that. So we had embedded detectives with there, we had all kinds of different resources out there that you never saw, that were walking among the crowd that we, to keep everybody safe.
No, I really, thank you, Mr. Commissioner, thank you. I really appreciate the answer. And again, I want to, I want to say that I think BPD has done an excellent job in this area, and so I, I know sometimes once we start working with partners or contractors, just wanted to make sure that, that strong commitment that BPD has had to protect our communities, protect information, carries through all the way, you know, to all the, to all the people we're working with. So thank you.
Yes, there's all kinds of different laws with, with, we have, like with our gang unit, there are certain guidelines we have to follow before someone can be entered into the gang, CFR 24, I think it is. So there's a lot of things that we have to comply with, but we, we comply with everything that we, we need to based on the MOU.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, thank you for coming tonight, although I am a little frustrated that you promoted Lieutenant Colonel Bennett out of the Southern District, and now, now he's... No, Major Middleton has been awesome, so we're really...
He's still, he's still overseas your area, so...
Yeah, yeah, I can only complain so much, I can't. So it being Budget Week, might as well talk budget things. So first one, so I'm looking at recruitment, so section, or Service 635, I think, yeah. So just size-wise, it's, it's a little over 200 officers, and I recognize that covers the police academy as well, but it, it feels like a, a large number of, or a large number of personnel, sorry, a little less than 200 officers, but some civilian personnel. It feels large for the number of recruits that we return each year. Can you just talk through, obviously, we also have a very substantial vacancy challenge that we're going after as well, and I get that. Can you talk through what... Can you talk through what falls within that service and what those officers are doing day to day?
Yeah, so I'm happy to answer that question. Um, so there's two areas in the recruitment section, so the first one is gonna be the new recruits, so those are all our POTs. Um, so when we've got multiple classes going on and we've got fifty, um, you know, POTs in a class, um, then we need those positions so that we can basically give them that paycheck. Um, actually, because we've had so many people coming into the academy, we actually had to, um, move additional positions in there so that we had enough positions for the POTs coming in. The other area in there is actually underneath my chain of command, and it's sworn recruitment. So that is the actual recruitment team that does all the hard work in recruiting people here, um, selling the city, um, doing everything from going out to special events to, to schools and different things, and also the same team that do the backgrounds for, um, the people, um, applying to be a police officer, and that's got thirty people in it.
Okay, so I, so I think the main thing that I wasn't understanding was that the, uh, they were trainees in FY twenty-six budget, that's been, I guess, consolidated as just a police officer, and that's a, um, okay, so a little less than half of the officers within six thirty-five are trainees going through this academy?
Uh, more, more than that, the majority of them will be the trainees, so in the budget, when it was put together, I've had to add more positions to it because we do this budget in December of last year, we had a hundred and sixty-nine positions, um, just for the POTs, but because the class sizes have been so large, we've had to move temporarily additional positions there so that those, um, new officers have, or police officer trainees have a position to go into when they're hired.
Got it, okay, so of the non-trainees, right, of everyone else who, cause I know there's both, uh, new recruit, recruitment and sworn recruitment and everything, can you break down what, of the non-trainees, who is doing things within six thirty-five?
Yeah, so, um, the new recruitment is basically the POTs. Um, so the, the other area is sworn recruitment, um, so that's underneath, um, my team, and that is, um, a makeup of detectives, um, civilian investigators, um, a couple of sergeants, one lieutenant, um, one director, oh, sorry, deputy director, and one major, and that is the team that is doing all the hard work to hire sworn employees and bringing them to the city. They also hire the police cadets, um, they've done a great job bringing in police cadets, they're doing a great job doing POTs, um, so that team does everything from the recruiting itself, you know, going out there, um, you know, trying to bring people to be a police officer, to now managing the new marketing campaign that we have, we have a wonderful new marketing campaign, we've rebranded everything, um, they're the same team that then get the applicants, they pre-screen the applicants, they do the PAT testing, they do, um, the testing, they do, um, basically oversee the, the...
Sure, the whole...
The whole process, yes.
Yeah, assessment enrollment, yeah.
And just to be, that, that's a, the recruitment per se is a team of one and five officers, and then the background, the background investigators are two teams of a sergeant and four.
Gotcha, so this is not, uh, this is not, each officer recruits one trainee a year, this is a couple of officers recruiting a whole bunch of trainees every year?
Yeah, and the backgrounds is a lot, is a lot of work.
And they're the same ones that have to go out to these events and man the tents and everything else.
Yeah, 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 okay, awesome. Um, and then the, um, second question I was gonna have, um, alluded to earlier, um, I think, but, and probably also for the CFO, on the overtime cost versus filled positions, I know that, from my understanding is, there's, when you have a couple of vacancies, it is more cost, it's more cost-effective to have a couple vacancies than to be perfectly staffed because the time and a half doesn't cover the, the health and pensions and, and all that stuff. But when you have a lot of vacancies, like I think where we're at now, there's, it's the opposite, where it does end up costing more. What's the, um, do you know the difference financially if we were, if we were at our ideal, whatever our ideal staffing level would be, um, versus like what the, the cost-effectiveness of that compared to the FY twenty-six budget?
Yeah, I, I would have to run those numbers under the new contract, I mean, ideally we wanna be at two thousand five hundred sworn personnel, and we wanna be at our fully-staffed seven hundred professional staff. So I would have to go ahead and do that analysis to kind of separate, uh, the professional staff from the sworn staff, cause there's different drivers and costs, but I, I can do that.
Okay, um, got it, I think, uh, Madam Chair, there's a committee request to...
So I'm waiting on you.
Uh, Madam Chair, I would like to make an official request.
Okay, so we, so we need you to restate the request.
Okay, um, so I would like to see the, um, the budgetary cost in FY twenty-six dollars for what the BPD's budget would be if we were at whatever the ideal stat, if it's twenty-five hundred sworn or, or whatever, um, so we could understand the impact of, of the recruitment and retention challenge on the city financially.
So Councilman, I think I'm confused by the question. Um, BPD's bu- budget reflects us being fully staffed because that is the optimal that we work towards. Uh, what ends up happening is, we know that as of today, we're not fully staffed, um, but the department will still have to meet its shift constants, and it will meet the shift constants through overtime.
Got it, and so, Dr. That, so I'm, I'm actually asking the opposite question of what the additional cost will be because we're not actually fully staffed, um, projected over FY twenty-six?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you for the correction, that makes sense. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, give me one, how lo- how long is it gonna take you to provide the information?
Um, yeah, it, it won't take me that long, I just have to extract out the civilians, and then also I have to look at like consult H days and things like that, because we're not fully staffed, right, that comes into play as well, so it'll probably take, take me a, a week or so.
Okay, what's, also, do you, do you need two weeks?
So, um, Chairwoman, we will try to, we're trying to get you all of the follow-up responses by, um, two weeks from tomorrow, the eighteenth.
Okay, is that good with you?
That works great.
For this request?
Yes.
Okay, thank you both.
One thing that you also have to keep in mind is that they're currently in contract negotiations, so there's a chance that the officer, well, there's not a chance, the officer's gonna get another raise for, for, I think, believe they're doing a two-year contract or a three-year contract, so the cost of, will, will go up effective, um, and regardless of what happened, that takes effect July first, cause their contract expires on July first. So last year, we didn't get the contract done, and they, they got back pay, but they didn't get it until like January or February, which was a big hit to our budget, I think it was twenty-some million dollars.
Okay, um, thank you, Commissioner, I, I think the intent here is just to understand, like, you know, how much in general it's, it's costing, and this is obviously different from the, the, the long-term vacant conversation, we recognize it's a different challenge with sworn officers, just understanding what it's costing us to have this, have this gap, so... Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, because Commissioner, you wanna run us into another conversation about how this budget is gonna change, that we're proven, maybe. Um, Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate you all coming today. Um, just my first question was in, in regards, I was always curious about the, the ghost guns, um, I know a couple years ago, the city put a lawsuit into polymer eighty, and I'm just curious on, ever since that lawsuit, how that has impacted, um, the recovery of ghost guns, uh, has it gone down, or have you seen it increase, just whether or not it impacted the city at all?
Sorry, yes, it's had a huge increase, I think our ghost guns are down about twenty percent, I believe, since the lawsuit went into effect, it was, it was one of the, the better things that, that happened because it, it forbids the company who was supplying a lot of these ghost guns, um, to our young people, because that's who couldn't, they couldn't legally purchase one, so you could order all the gun pieces over to, to internet and put it together of a fully functioning firearm. So once that lawsuit happened, um, they've gone down, our recoveries and arrests have gone down about twenty percent, but we're still getting them simply because there's so many of them were on the street before the, the ban happened, and I'm sure they can still get them elsewhere, um, but the, had, they can't sell them to anyone, any resident of the state of Maryland.
Cool, great, I was just always curious how that, that impact happened, and while I had you here, I can ask you a question that's important to my office, um, while, you know, we strive to solve problems in our neighborhood every day and commend the, your officers and the coordination they've had in, in overcoming these challenges, but one of the areas in which I feel like we could probably do a little more in, in addressing is, often in neighborhoods, there is those corners and those stores where you have young men and women just standing outside of the store, and everyone knows what they're doing, the neighborhood knows what they're doing, and, you know, we drive past them every day, our residents drive past them every day, and, you know, they get frustrated and they continue to call the office, and we have a hard time on figuring out a solution on how that hap- how to like fix it, because, you know, we make enough noise and, you know, an officer may sit there for a day or two, and they may not exist, but as soon as that car is gone, it's right back to business. Is there a coordinated effort with the department on, you know, cracking at them, the store owners, or what's going on out the store, um, so that people can see progress? Because while we're making progress, when residents see things people shouldn't be doing every single day, and they feel like, I know what they're doing, the department knows what they're doing, how is this allowed to continue to happen? Is there a plan to kind of address that, and what are the challenges with it, and is there anything we can do as a, as a council to, to kind of help, um, combat this issue? Because it's, it's one that's been plaguing my, my office.
We, we do have a padlock law to, for those businesses who refuse to cooperate, um, unfortunately, some businesses are just in bad locations as far as, um, attracting, uh, people hanging outside. Our officers can stop and surely talk to people, but the, the, I, I think what happened is a lot of people believe that we can still just go up and clear a corner, which is unconstitutional. So we, we can't do that, but one thing that usually stops them from hanging out is if a cop goes up and talks to them. You just talk to them, they don't wanna talk to us, they don't wanna be around us, so they'll leave, but unfortunately, the workload doesn't allow the officers to spend as much time. That's why it's important to get our staffing up, cause we want our officers to spend about twenty to forty percent of their hour on self-initiated activity, which is walking foot, and the numbers I gave earlier, we're doing a lot better with that, but we still have a long way to go. But we do have some iss- some things that we can do, our misdemeanor and our felony drug arrests are up. Unfortunately, there are, and I'm being honest, there are a lot of those type of corners and businesses that we have to address, and, um, I think our group violence reduction strategy is aimed partially at that, um, because if they're causing the violence, they're given the option, um, through MONC to take these other services, but we want you to put the guns down. If not, the police department comes in and does their investigation, um, we indict them, and we turn it over to the state's attorney or the US attorney, um, to prosecute, but the option is, we want them to find something else and to do something else productive. That's why we have the wraparound services that we offer before and after the takedowns, um, cause once we do an indictment and the state's attorney gets the, we get the arrest, we've gotta go in and, and, and basically settle that neighborhood so no one else steps in, that's part of the problem, that's why you, you hear there's areas where they've been dealing drugs for thirty years. It's not the same guys dealing drugs for thirty years, it's a whole group that just continues to take over those areas. We have several of those that we, we are, uh, basically targeting through the group violence reduction strategy, but again, it goes back to resources and how quickly we can get to everyone.
Thank you for your answer, I would a- also just challenge you, but sometimes it ain't always violence, right, and even people aren't always shooting at each other, and sometimes they have an understanding of, look, if we start bringing out the guns, none, none of us is gonna make money, so let's not make this violent, right, and that way we can keep going on and let, you know, the mo- everything continue to happen, but when it comes to some residents who live in a neighborhood and pay taxes and, you know, wanna see their neighborhood moving in the right direction, and wanna at least make it feel like they're also a part of the win that we're having as a city, you know, it, it gets difficult, so I would just, you know, say, look, I wanna work with you all and see what we can come up with, I, I understand the difficulties, and just wanna make sure I wasn't missing anything.
My mom, when she was alive, worked at one of those stores, and I'd get in there full every time I went to see her. I know what they're doing, you know what they're doing, why can't you guys stop it? Like, well, there are laws to make, so she, but I, I know exactly what you're going through because I had to hear it from my own mom.
So Councilman Jones, to the PC's point, he's a hundred percent correct, so felony CDS arrests are up nine percent, misdemeanor CDS arrests right now today are up twenty-seven percent. I would say your concerns about these businesses are our concerns, you know, one of the consent decree metrics is informal engagements, and as the PC alluded to earlier, that proactivity of foot patrol and business checks is very vital to us, uh, getting that, um, that visible presence in those areas. I know for, for myself, you know, open-air drug markets in Baltimore, you know, they demand a multifaceted strategy, one that, um, integrates not only enforcement, harm reduction, but public health intervention, so we're looking at all of these metrics, while I won't dive into all of our investigative measures, I will say that between our district action teams, our post officers and patrol officers, our GBS and GBU units, and coupled with our B6 and Watch Center, we're monitoring these areas, and unfortunately, the individuals who do the, through the investigation, who we have to target and then investigate, and then hopefully indict at one point, you may not see the arrests right then and there because we have to let them get out the area, we have to build a case sometimes, so, um, our approach follows a tiered structure, beginning with all of the officers, all the way up to this GVRS, GVRS model, we wanna get those crime and violence drivers, but we also realize that these communities, you know, the grandma going to the store, the kids wanting to play, it's an eyesore, I've been born, I've born and raised here, I understand it as well as you do, so just know that we do have a tiered approach to it, we're not, um, pulling back on this, we're aggressively going with this, with the state's attorney's office in reference to identifying even, uh, cannabis arrests, you know, those areas that individuals, for whatever reason, this misinformation that, you know, uh, smoking marijuana is legal, so we have to go back out there and work with our state's attorney in reference to building these cases and where there are group, and member involved in group organizations, working with the state's attorneys office through our liaisons to identify if you see this location, if you see this arrest, this has to be giving a, a more specific, um, attention because it's one of these areas that we're having concerns with, either at our commander's meetings, or that the PC and I received through our emails in reference to, you know, some constituent concerns, know that it is, it is on the forefront of our minds.
Thank you for that answer, I just wanted to make sure it was as much of a priority as to you all as it is to me and the residents in my district. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Horne?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Worley, um, one second as I bring up my questions. So I wanna discuss, um, cause I know this is kind of a hard place to be in, it's given the medical examiner's audit. Um, my question is, I'm trying to articulate this in a way that is thought of meaningful for like our budget discussions, but for practices moving forward, um, I'll just start with basic facts so that we can get there for the public and just go from there. Um, with the reclassification, the recent audit revealed that thirty-six staffs in police custody were misclassified and should have been ruled homicides. How many of those cases involve BPD officers, and what steps the department have taken to address these findings?
I believe it's about eighteen that involve BPD cases, um, but what happens, this is an, an attorney general audit, um, we will cooperate with them, but right now, they haven't asked us for anything, so all it is, is for us, they're reclassifying, um, several different type of incidents, like undetermined or suspicious to homicide, um, and they have not asked us for anything, uh, so we have to wait until they figure out how they're gonna proceed, um, before we do anything for any, any other...
So my question is a follow-up, in the eighteen cases that we, that have been, have been misclassified involved our officers, we have not done any type of internal review at all yet, to see if there's any issues that... could have led to a practice that we can change while we wait for the attorney general's office and others to provide guidance?
No, the cases that we have, we've already investigated the cases based on with the, whoever, it's usually the homicide unit or it was homicide unit because all our cases was 2014 or sooner. So, that case has already been investigated. And when they ruled it a homicide, the homicide means the person died as, basically from an interaction with another individual. So, we don't know exactly what the medical examiners that did the audit ruled or what the attorney general is going to do with the cases. So, we have to wait and see what they want, if they want the case files or what they want to do with it. And they also brought in that the state police would be assisting them. So, we have to sit and wait until the attorney general tells us where they're going with this audit.
So, I'm torn because both, I get the wait and see, but also we have seen the federal government itself go back and look at its own cases. I give an example of how they identified the killers from Martin Luther King in which the attorney general's office went back and reviewed his actual like cases to see if there were mistakes made by their officers. What I'm trying to get to is, are we willing to even do a deep dive to review our initial investigation to make sure that there were no issues in those investigations? That way, we're clear that we're waiting for what the examiner did themselves, but also making sure that BPD has disguised some patterns or practice that we have to be accountable for moving forward, just being transparent. Because that is a legitimate question.
So, Councilman, to be clear, the determination by the OCME was to change the classification of the case, not to insinuate that there was any wrongdoing by anybody, but that the classification was incorrect based on their analysis. Some of those cases may be, and again, there was something like 80 of the cases, I think 41 of them were misclassified. But again, it's the classification homicide definition is that you died either at the hands of or with someone else. It doesn't mean it's a murder. It doesn't mean there was any wrongdoing. It just means you're driving down the road, you hit somebody, they die, that's homicide. So, we have to, we have to wait to see what their requests are because we've looked at the cases they mentioned, they've been investigated. We're not going to reinvestigate them until we get direction from them first because that could negatively impact what they want to do. And we don't know what they want to do because they haven't communicated with us yet what they want to do. So, once they do that, then we can put a plan in place and move forward. But until that time, it would be irresponsible of us to start looking at something if they are going to come in and take it over because then we've used resources that we don't need to because they're going to do it. Or if they ask us for information or assistance, then we can help them. But we're going to have to start fresh whenever they decide to, so we're waiting to get direction from them. I do know that the attorney general's office has now taken the lead on doing them as opposed to all of the state's attorney's offices around the state. So, we're just waiting to hear the plan. You know, we've looked to see the 12, I think it was 12, 15 cases that were here. We've looked to see if we have files. So, if they come looking for them, we can immediately participate in that.
So, we have gathered all those files in preparation of just in case there will be a review.
Yes, we have all the files. So, Lieutenant Colonel Homan, I oversee the homicide section. It's important that each one of these cases had a homicide investigation. It's also, you know, vetted through the state's attorney's office with all of these cases. So, again, to the deputies and the commissioner's point, we have the case files ready. We're ready and willing to help the attorney general's office if and when, you know, that comes to pass.
So, I hear you, but in terms of public trust, I think there should be some type of review to make sure that everything was dotted on our own investigations. I would ask the same question of the state's attorney's office to review their staff as well because that to me, it goes a long way. Whether it's a waste of resources or not, it proves to the community that we're willing to look, take a step back and look at our own practices to make sure that mistakes were not taken, right? And I'm not accusing officers of doing wrongdoing. I'm not accusing the department of doing wrongdoing, but I'm just asking to take a fresh look, look at the files, make sure things are there and that we have done a review to make sure things were done correctly.
So, I will say, in that report, there is no allegation that
I know.
That any police officer did anything wrong. It's an allegation, the allegation is, is that the classification by the OCME was wrong. So, the investigation is the OCME, it's not the individual agency. We happen to have the reports, which is useful in that investigation. So, there is nothing to investigate except re-investigate something that was already investigated.
But I hear you, but as a person who lived in Baltimore City, we still have to gain trust. And we've done a lion's share to get there, but we still should say, let's take a fresh set of eyes with this. You could hire a former civilian investigator to look at the cases just to make sure that we got everything possible. The reason why is because mistakes happen, right? And I say that because if there was a mistake on the agency, the SAO, ultimately, there are settlements that will come out of those mistakes that were made from either of those either agency, right? So, I think that we should be prudent and review those files to make sure that we're good.
Thank you so much for the line of questioning, Councilmember. So, again, I just wanted to reiterate some of the points that BPD, that BPD made. So, in these instances-
Just for this hearing, just your name.
Oh, no worries. Faith Leach, City Administrator, apologies, everyone. So, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points that BPD made and some of the important points. I mean, of course, and we talk about this all the time relative to BPD, but obviously we're governed by a consent decree. And we, of course, engage with the consent decree monitor around some of these issues. But even further than that, we work very closely with the attorney general's office as well as the governor's office whenever we are faced with these instances. So, I want to make sure that we're clear about all of the levels of engagement that happen whenever there is an officer involved, whenever there's officer involvement. And so, just wanted to double down on that in the points that BPD made there.
I hear you guys, but the response is still unresponsive to whether or not we should be prudent. It's the wait and see. And I will say this every day, from all the commanders I had, I will stand by them to make sure that we do things right. But I think for the men and women of this department, when we have been faced with, been faced with a lion's share of things, we need to sit there, do a pullback, even if we hire a civilian investigator just to look over things and double check, right? Because that gives us the standing to say, hey, we took a look back at ourselves. It is the positioning of this city that we show that we're trying to move forward and guard them more trust, right? And I say that wholeheartedly as someone who represents the area where unrest happened, right? As a person who was a victim of police brutality myself, right? I want people to see this city as us being accountable both publicly in our statements, but also in our posturing, right? A simple review by a civilian investigator for $100,000, it's not a waste of resources, given the lion's share of how much the budget is for the BPD.
Yes. So, and thank you so much for that. And we echo that, the sentiments about the public perception and the trust that we want this department to build with the community. And I think that this department has made pretty significant progress. But to your broader point, I want to commit to us having a meeting to follow up to, to discuss this request.
And I would say in two weeks, Madam Chair, if that's possible. Yes. Yes, in two weeks, just to make sure that we have it.
Thank you.
Next, Commissioner, this is something I've, I've been looking at based off of like national models in terms of condition and staffing models for reform in the district. Now, we have local control. I think that we do have the Adam Baker and Charlie shifts. Have we thought about having two shifts, given the recent studies that showed no increase in accidents? I'm, listen, I firmly believe two parts, right? I think that if we switch to two shifts, I'm going to spit out there, we'll be able to staff all the posts, but also to the men and women who are experiencing trauma, there are some people who can sub in and help them get away from that trauma too. I think we really need to have that honest conversation, especially given the vote that, in bargaining recently, we need to figure out a way. If officers want more, let's figure out a model that works for them and a model that works for us because many of them complain about being held back for four hours anyway. So, you might as well do the 12.
The number is 100. We need 100 more officers. And I've been a proponent of this for years and I keep looking at the numbers. And you have to give them some time and I'm debating, I know they're kind of cringing behind me because I'm debating on talking to the FOP and possibly doing it this year, but I think we're going to have to wait until '27. But we need 100 more officers in patrol right now in order to put the 12-hour shifts in place. And we've, we've been working with the FOP with this because everybody would win on this because 100 more means very little, if any, overtime would be done in patrol and no drafting because you're already working 12 and a half hours because it can't be just straight 12. But then there's also a overlapping shift in there that we, we have figured out. So, I've been looking at this for a while and it's beneficial to everybody because all the officer sergeants and lieutenant would all work the same days on, same days off, basically everybody would be together. But I want to do it as quickly as we can.
I appreciate you and I'm willing to advocate for it because it makes the most sense. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And Councilman Blanchard, I just want to highlight that we have two from the Southern District, one before your time and one in your time. So, Southern District clearly is a great district. Anywho, I want to comment on the conversation and discussion about open-air drug markets. Lieutenant Colonel Veltie, I'm going to actually have you come back up because I want to really understand, I want to really understand about these district action teams and I want to, not only just to go deeper into the plan, but understanding the staffing model for these district action teams.
Well, you do, no. I thought somebody else, the district action teams don't fall under Lieutenant Colonel Veltie.
No, but there's one in particular, I'm about to ask the intersection, so that's why I'm bringing it back up. So, the intersection that I'm really concerned about, and I bring this up at every BPD hearing since I came into office, is the 1100 block of Washington Boulevard. And so, talk to us about what your office does in relation to those district action teams and how they interact.
So, the Southern, as you know, is getting ready to be onboarded into the GVR strategy fully. They have been implemented in the violence review for some months now. That gives the district commanders a snapshot of what groups in what areas are causing specifically violence, retaliatory violence, cyclical violence, things of that nature. From those violence reviews, the intelligence comes out of where they should deploy, whom they should be looking at specifically for that focused deterrence and focused extractions within those groups to tamp down violence and hold people accountable. I'm very familiar with the block that you're speaking about. I will say, even if we are looking at intelligence that doesn't fall within the GPRS purview, now that all intelligence is under my purview, that information is then communicated to the district commanders for the DAT teams for enforcement, as well as our BCICs. So, now, BCICs have fallen under me as well, myself and Major McGrath. There's a coordinated effort now to really ramp up BCICs spearheading some of these narcotics investigations, specifically down along that Washington Boulevard corridor. There was a non-fatal shooting down in that area not too long ago.
Yep.
As a result of that, some really good intelligence came out, some folks that may have been involved in a DTO down there, BCIC, took the lead on that investigation out of the Southern. They did a really good job, seized over a kilo of cocaine and some firearms. So, really, as it stands right now, the district action teams, for the most part, are at the guidance of the district majors and captains for where they see fit to put them. Districts that are fully implemented within the GPRS strategy, those district action teams out of the violence reviews are assigned deliverables. We will say, this group and this group are having either conflict with one another in retaliatory nature. You need to focus on this group and specifically these individuals, or it may be one group feuding amongst themselves, an intergroup conflict. Those DAT teams are at some point responsible for those extractions as well. As we move citywide in GPRS, as we expand, we imagine that the DAT teams will have a larger responsibility in the enforcement arm with the strategy.
And so, the reason why I wanted to really focus on your office is because of the intelligence. You know, if we are asking residents to provide that information to BPD, we're asking them to let us tap into, you know, their resources within their homes, within communities, the city watch cameras. We are, we have a lot of money tied up in intelligence. A lot of money. And I know for a fact that, you know, now Lieutenant Colonel Bennett, when you were in the Southern, we talked about the, we talked about the data center that was going to happen in Southern District on the par of like $700,000, if I remember correctly. Like, we have so much money tied up in intelligence and I'm not, I'm not certain that we're using the information in a way that we can resolve a lot of these crimes that are happening pretty quickly. For example, when we are looking at, you know, I know under former Commissioner Harrison, it was the microzone approach.
Yes.
You know, and now we're moving into more of, you know, you know, more of an approach where we're using GPRS. I want to make sure that we have continuity between the plans from intelligence and making sure that we're resolving these cases. Because here's the, here's the issue. When we have corners that have been existing, particularly some in the two terms that I've been sitting and they have not been resolved yet, how are we able to, how are we able to justify these tens of thousands of dollars that we're spending in intelligence?
I will say this, the intelligence as it existed prior to the commissioner's restructuring was good within their silos. And it's not to take anything away from the BCICs as they operate under district command. They do very well responding to incidents within their districts as far as tracking with video, tracking with LPRs. They're generally a great assistance to Colonel Herzog and Colonel Homan shop for helping clear crimes. I will say that we did notice the siloing information didn't always get where it needed to go. This restructuring has aligned all of the intelligence under one purview and then it also aligns it with the GPRS model going forward. One of the things I did very quickly, once it came up under me, the BCICs were really hampered by only having access to cameras within their specific geographies. That has changed. The BCICs, everybody assigned to a BCIC now, has citywide camera access. That does a couple of things. That allows us to track things outside of district boundaries that are going to come back and impact districts because we know that groups and individuals and DTOs cross all two boundaries. They don't care about district boundaries.
And also jurisdictions.
Correct. And that was hampering us, I think, for a little bit. What it also allows us to do is if, say, the Southern District had an event going on, a shooting, a homicide, a carjacking, anything of that nature, and that BCI was busy tied up on that, the other BCICs now can jump in and help. They can get on the cameras in the Southern District. They all coordinate amongst each other. There is a, there is a ever tell thread where they, they coordinate intel and they communicate with each other, kind of ad nauseam.
And does that include license tags? So, one of the major issues that we've been experiencing, I know in my district and across the city, where we have a few key cars that are switching license tags. And so, how are you all able to resolve that intelligence if the cars are switching license tag and you're not able to connect the dots with the actual crime?
So, without getting too far into the weeds and that, while it can be a temporary roadblock, I would say that it's not a permanent one.
Okay. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
One thing that I wanted to bring up too is, I know those areas have been problems for two terms, but you have to remember for one of those terms, their misdemeanors were not being prosecuted for CDS.
So, I completely hear you, Commissioner. I hear you and understand you and I understand that the change in the state's attorney has changed a lot of the information and, you know, data that's been gathered for these crimes. But I'll just be, speak very frankly, you all aren't getting the calls, we are. And so, just to kind of follow up with Councilman Jones's point, we are the ones that are getting the calls from residents that are saying that these- these corners, these communities, these particular businesses are... You okay?
I think I got your point and, and I fully understand. So I will say when it goes back to, you know, the DAT teams, the DAT and the district commanders give us a weekly priority of what the DAT's for. I won't go into specific of what the investigations are for or the status of the cases, but it gives us a start date. It gives us the pri, a priority of what the problem is that they're trying to address, whether it is a past shooting or CDS distribution, open drug market, it could be a robbery, whatever it may be. It gives us the tactics that they are looking to utilize to deter and dismantle these groups. It gives us the specific geography and the partners within themselves that they are utilizing. At ComStat in different intervals, we then do an audit and oversight of, this is what you said last week, where are you at, what was the progress? And we see that in the 9% increase in felony arrests and the 27% increase in misdemeanors. I will say habitually for this city, unfortunately, some of these corners, not unlike the corners that we know that there are illegal sex workers, there is enforcement done there, but because the messaging is already out there that this is a good area, for whatever reason, right? We take off the snake head, there is somebody in that place to step up again. So while the officers are making those arrests, unfortunately, there is a pipeline of other individuals who do step up and try to pick up. So we're trying to dismantle that as we did with Princess Plaza and other, that when we do make these indictments, whether it's Curtis Bay or Princess Plaza, that we then infiltrate it with the resources to stabilize that community so it doesn't get back to what it used to be. It, it is an ongoing effort and I overstand what you're trying to say, man.
How long should we wait?
I don't think that's, I, I hear what you're saying, I just don't think it's a fair question. I think, you know, born and raised in this city, where I was raised on the east side, Milton Avenue is still Milton Avenue. There's, and it's not because of, it's not because of the lack of good police work. It's unfortunately a, a clientele and a health problem that has not been addressed. The individuals are trying to fix an issue, be it behavioral crises or trying to escape unfortunately their lifestyle. We have to address some other things that we're not going to be able to always arrest our way out of it.
And Deputy Commissioner, and Madam Chair, this is my last statement, my, my apologies. I hear you, but I'm not talking about a public health crisis. I'm talking about violent, violent crimes that are happening within our neighborhood. So it's, it's, I understand, you know, I understand the statement where you're saying, you know, some of these corners have been there for 30 years. That is a trauma response. That is a trauma, I mean, I'm, I'm 37 years old and I say the same thing. That is a trauma response and we need to really understand what is happening. We need to begin to fix, whether it's enforcement, whether it's service delivery, we, we just need to think creatively about what we are going to do moving forward. Because here's, here's, here's the issue. We serve in these roles for a certain amount of time. And the next person that's going to come after us, hopefully they won't have to go through the same thing that we are going through right now in these budget hearings, where they're not asking the same questions. So if we are putting tens of thousands of dollars in intelligence, we just got to fix it, point blank.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Councilman Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Over the past year, how many police misconduct complaints has the police department received? And how does it typically, and how long does it take on average to review them and refer a complaint to the Police Accountability Board? And I have a follow-up.
Sir, the total number of cases received in year 2024 was 1,463. That involves both internal and external cases. The average, now those don't all go, you say Police Accountability Board, you mean the ACC. The Administrative Charge Committee, they do cases. The average time it takes-
Just to the Police Accountability Board?
What was the question?
No, how long does it take for it to, for it to be reviewed by the Police Accountability Board? My second part will address the ACC.
Yeah, so how long does it take to get to the ACC? They don't go to the Police Accountability Board, so they go to the ACC. To go to the ACC, I don't have an average time to go to the ACC. Those are cases that involve members of the public, which take longer. We have a statutory requirement to get them to them within a year to, and they have to be assessed by them within a year and a day, so they do meet that. Our overall average is approximately 145 days, but that includes cases that go to the PRB and to the ACC.
Okay. Of, of the cases referred, how many have been sent to the ACC? And how many of them have been declined by the committee?
How many have been declined by?
By the ACC.
When you say declined, what do you mean by declined?
Declined to be, to be, to be looked at. Like when you send it over to the ACC, they take a look and they decline for any type of corrective action?
Ophemia Connie again, Chief of the Public Integrity Bureau. I believe at the last count, I think it's 11 cases that we referred to the ACC that they declined to charge. But I'll make, I'll verify those numbers again, see, but I believe it's 11.
Okay. Councilman, I, I just want to clarify the declined. So they are allowed by state law to decline them if the member is no longer a police officer. So if they get a case on Officer Jones and the Officer Jones, by the time they get the case, is no longer a police officer, they are allowed to decline.
Because at that time, they say they no longer have jurisdiction over that officer and so they, they, they don't hear the case.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure we're talking apples to apples. And so when you're saying declined, you're saying cases we submitted, they took no action?
Yes.
So the, at the beginning, there were some cases they misrouted and so they weren't done. I wouldn't say they were declining those, they were just lost. Now that we have a process in place and it's running effectively, the only cases that they've declined that I'm aware of are the ones where the member is no longer a police officer. Therefore, they have no jurisdiction.
So of the ones over the past year, the 11, they're all individuals who are no longer with the police force?
Yeah. Can you repeat your last statement, sir?
You said there were 11 that were declined. So of, of those 11, all 11 were, are no longer with the police?
No, so the 11 I'm talking about are cases where the ACC said they were not going to review because we sent them to them. I believe it was maybe about a week before expiration, even though they got it in the one-year, one-day period. So the 11 cases I'm talking about are those that were submitted to them within the timeframe allowed by statute, but they said they were not going to review because they got it about seven days or so before expiration.
Correct. And why, and how many of those were sent in that time period? I think that, I, I feel like there's a pattern of the cases being sent right at the deadline, making it hard for...
So let, let me just clarify that. So we have a process in place with them now, right, where they have access to the cases. As we finish them, they have immediate access to them, they get noticed. I, I will say that at the beginning, right, it's, it's a new process. It's a new process across the state. We have the largest volume. So there was a learning process in place, which is why some stuff got lost. But now that we've, we've given them access to the case file, they have complete access to the case files now. They have the exact same access I have. They can see the cases, they see when they're coming. Since that process has been put in place and we gave them access to bodywork cameras immediately because they're required to look at those, since that's happened, that number has really drastically decreased, the, the time they've getting them. Now, what the chief's talking about is there were some cases that they got at the end and they were, they opted not to do them. Some of those cases were sustained cases, some were not sustained cases. That is a, that was a small subset of cases that did happen. But we, we have a very good open relationship with the ACC. We talk to them every other week, the commanders and I. And so we've worked out all those issues with them so that it doesn't happen again. And I will say, starting October 1st, the new statute requires BPD to be done within 334 days, gives them 30 days to review, an additional 30 days, they want extra work done. So that'll completely clear up any possibility of what you're, what you and the chief have referred to ever to happen again.
And I appreciate that because to be just direct, it seemed before the new protocols were put in place. And I'll be honest, I don't think a protocol should have been put in place in order for the information to be received in a timely manner. It almost seems as if it was intentional. I'm glad you guys are cleaning it up, but I just wanted to make sure that those, that those questions were asked. And to be quite frank, I am very, I'm glad you guys are cleaning it up and, and you're sending them at least 30 days before. But it is what it is.
Yeah. I, I just want to respond to the intentional. From the beginning, we, we requested that the ACC use the same system we do to make it very smooth in the beginning. They opted not to. They bought a separate system. As you, we all know, you buy two systems, they don't always talk. So what we had to do, because that's the, what they decided to do, is work a process around that, which the process around that was for them to get access to our system. That way they could download themselves and bring it up into their own system. So it would have been more seamless had they followed the recommendation, but they didn't. But we worked around that. And so it was no intentional, it was just systems didn't talk, which was a IT nightmare. So we had to get the systems to talk. They also aren't members of the department, so getting access because of the, the encryption, et cetera, was a challenge. So it took a little bit of time to get that up and running. I will say the staff over there now, and really the staff at the beginning, was phenomenal trying to work through this. But again, this was a brand-new process in the state. Nobody had ever done it and nobody had the volume. So now we have it up and running, it seems to be running pretty effectively.
And just to add to what DCNADI was said, also with respect to the cases, when we send the cases to the ACC, the OECD manages their case for them. So we don't determine what cases they hear and what timeframe they hear the cases. Now, when those cases are done, OECD has case managers that present those cases to the ACC. They determine when they want to present what case to the ACC. That's not controlled by BPD. Once those cases are completed, they're notified. OECD does that case management on behalf of the ACC. We don't have any control over that.
Thank you. Service 628 Police Integrity Bureau. I just want to read just a few of these fiscal years out. Number of complaints per 121 was 50. The number of investigations completed within 180 days were 35%. 22 was 67, 47. In 23, it was 64 with 44% of investigations completed within 180 days. And, and fiscal '24, there were 60 with 25% of them completed in 180 days. And now we're looking in fiscal '25, you're saying 60% again. And in '26, you're saying 60% again. And so when we look at these metrics, how's the public supposed to have trust in the department with metrics that look like the following? That I just stated. And with only 25% actually investigated within 180 days in fiscal year '24, what are the primary reasons for such a low completion rate in the fiscal year '24? And what specific changes are being implemented in the Public Integrity Bureau to meet the 60% target in FY '26, given the importance of a timely and thorough investigation of public trust? 60% seems really ambitious based on the fiscal '24 numbers. Can you just explain that?
60% of the cases being completed, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So all of the cases are completed within the statutory requirement by the, by the state. Also by the, we're working with the consent decree and the monitoring team, et cetera, to make sure all this is getting done. I think we talked about earlier, a lot of this has to do with staffing. If we had full staff, we would be in a much better situation. We realize that. We're working towards that. The, the number of complaints you speak for hundred officers, I, I will say, we are a self-assessing agency. Right? We have our own audits and inspection, we assess ourselves. We actually, some of those complaints are actually complaints that we've actually filed on officers who we believe might have violated even overtime policy, a bodywork camera policy, et cetera, from our own audits and inspections. In addition to that, we also have no control really over what the public complains about. We have many ways to file complaints. You can file a complaint through the PAB, you can file a complaint online, you can file through our portal, you can walk into our office, you can go to any district, there's numerous ways to file complaints. What I will tell you is, a lot of people file a complaint at the onset, even through our portal. But when reached out, there may not be a lot of cooperation with us. So we all know, right, if something happens, it's easy to be upset at the moment, but sometimes a few days later, you know, things bypass and you don't want to move through with it. So what I will just say is, I say that because a lot of those complaints that you're referring to that are on there, if you look across the years, like those numbers have been high. We've been at about 1,500 complaints, 1,400 complaints over the past three, four years. However, back in 2015, '16, we were at 2,500. So we've reduced the number of complaints down, although we have less officers. So it comes into play is, you know, the complaints aren't necessarily the excessive criminal complaints that we've had before. There are a lot of these are more minor policy violation complaints that we are finding ourselves on our own officers in trying to correct the behavior early, so it doesn't continue.
No, and I appreciate that, but what I'm asking for is what specific changes are being implemented to ensure that you actually hit the, your, your target, which is 60%. And I only ask this is because you're putting out this number and to say that your target is 60% and they hit 25, I don't want to be here next year and we look at it and it's 25 again and then in '26, it's 28 or 25. I think you, we should be realistic about what is, what is actually going on because we're not the only people to read these as well. This doesn't show any trust in the public if we're putting numbers at 60% and we're falling well below.
Yeah. So it, it's a hope that through education and training, right, through better supervision, better oversight, that our officers are not violating policies a lot of the way. Like I think we talked before, our use of force are down 51%, our police failed shootings are down 82%. Like, we're trending in the right direction. What we need to do though is just make sure that officers are following the policy, we're not getting complaints about the public. Again, we can't control the public complaints. And honestly, our internal complaints are, are rising only because, again, we're a self-assessing agency, right? At some point, we're going to move out of this consent decree, but we are still going to be a self-assessing agency, you know, as required through 21st century policing. So that is what we're going to be doing. We are already doing that, which is what some of these complaints are. We could stop doing that and not have the complaints, but that's not a true reflection of what we want to be, right? We want to find our own problems, correct them before they go down, any further down the road. What we do is assess situations, assess the policy. If the policy doesn't seem to be matching 2025, we correct it, we get public input on it. So there's a whole lot of things that continue to happen in this agency as we evolve to make those numbers lower.
Thank you. I look forward to having this discussion next year. And hopefully you implement the changes needed to make sure you hit your target because, you know, I, I want you guys to make sure that you are hitting the targets that you are supposed to and doing the investigations in a timely manner. Thank you for your time.
Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner disappeared. Yeah, probably a good question here, maybe it's, Aaron, I guess can handle it. So consent decree. We've heard, or I've heard some talk over the last, I guess, month or two about like, kind of conversations of, well, while we're still in the consent decree, we can't do this thing or that thing or this needs to be, right? We're working our way out of it. Can, what's the, I mean, where are we at on that? What's the process that?
I'm going to turn it over to Chief Sullivan, but I think that sometimes people-
but I think that sometimes people like conflate whether or not we're in a consent decree and whether or not we're constitutionally policing. So I'm sure that Chief Sullivan can explain it.
Yeah, definitely not what I was, definitely not what I was referring to. But yeah, thanks for the clarification, Chief.
Good evening, Chief Sullivan. Over compliance, we're doing really well with the consent decree. And as many people have set up here, one of the main goals of the decree is to be a self-assessing, self-correcting agency, and that is exactly what we do now. So it's policies, training, systems of accountability. We have our own system set up, an audit and inspection unit that does hundreds of audits and inspections a year. Some of those findings, right, get reported to PIB because potentially there's misconduct. When we report on that work, it's either in ComStat. Some of it's actually at public meetings or public hearings in court. Any of the reports that we do, whether it's First Amendment protected activity, use of force, stops or release without charges, those are all on our website. So we're very transparent about the work that we're doing.
So that, that will still go on? Those numbers will still be made public after the? I guess, can you, can you explain to me, like, what? At some point, the judge is going to say, hey, you guys hit all the things and like rip up a big piece of paper? Like, what, what happens?
Yes, pretty much. Yes. So depending on the section of the decree, there's a sustainment period, which is basically the work that we do now for most of it, even if they haven't officially said we're in full and effective compliance in an area. But ultimately, the way it would work is their monitoring team who works for the court comes in, does their own assessment. Frequently, they use our self-assessments to determine, and then they'll do their own checking. And then based on that, they'll make a decision. They work with the Department of Justice. They'll file a motion if everybody agrees. Now I'm getting into a lot of legal speak, but then the judge would look at that evidence and then determine, okay, I think I agree with the parties. And then would say, you know, now you've hit full and effective compliance, and you have to sustain that for one year or two, depending on the section of the decree. And then after that, right, we are not under federal oversight for that section. But no, he's not going to approve that if he doesn't believe we have the systems already in place to keep that work going. So that is exactly what we've been doing.
Okay, got it. And then the, the last, I think, question on this line, and it's probably good that the commissioner's back for this one. We're talking consent decree and graduating out of it and whatnot. And specifically the, this idea of like, the shift constants are determined, at least partially by a consent decree, just as an example of something that could, like, obviously, we're not going to stop constitutionally policing because we graduate out, that would defeat the whole last 10 years, right? But are there things that the department, once we graduate out of it, that we will do differently because we are graduated out of the consent decree?
I would say no, because what happened is the consent decree gave us a blueprint on how to reform a police department. And that's what we've learned over the, over the years, is that even when we, we exit the consent decree, where we, there's no more oversight from the federal government, we want to keep doing the things we're doing because that's made us the police department we are. And we've shown that we can not only reform the department, but lower crime at the same time. So our men and women have bought into it. They've done a fabulous job. And even if whatever happens with DOJ, we've committed, the mayor, the judge, and myself, we've all committed to keep this process going because it's made us the department we are today. And we still got some work to do, but we're headed in the right direction. And that was the blueprint that gave it to us, and we want to complete it. But even these, the two areas that fell off, we're not going to stop assessing those because if we do, then we're going to fall right back into the same old habits that we've done. But I think our department, the culture has changed. The men and women have changed from warriors to guardians. And I think we're in a really good place to carry this forward for a long time.
So you see, and your vision here is that it becomes redundant or opposite? Like, we're going to, effectively for the patrol officer on the ground or wherever across the department, it's, it should be pretty transparent whether in the, whether we are still involved in the consent decree or not?
Yeah, we're not, the behavior is trained. So they, they're trained to behave, and we're trained to do things the right way. And that is going to continue regardless of who is the commissioner. Well, I can't say that if I'm not the commissioner. But as far, long as we're here, we're going to continue to do it because it's been the successful model that we've all put together for reform. And then the group violence reduction strategy is hitting the violence part. So we're headed in the right direction. 56 homicides is still too many, but we're going to keep pushing forward. And I can't emphasize enough how proud I am of the work the men and women continue to do. And we're talking about it now, they're almost just under 500 officers short. So they do a phenomenal job.
Yeah, definitely. No disagreement there.
And at 500, I just equate that to where we were in like 2014, 2011, when we went under 300 homicides. We had close to 3,000 cops. Now we're hitting sort of those same numbers with 2,000 cops. And the only way we can do that is partnerships. And that's how you succeed, is everybody works together to make the city safer.
Yeah, awesome.
And Councilman, I should just add, we've become a blueprint for a lot of agencies across this country because of how we did transform an agency. Transforming an agency is not a light switch flick, right? It takes time. But we have agencies from all over the country. We've had a few international agencies come here to sort of learn from our team here how we did it. How did you change culture? How did you do it so quickly? Yeah, we would all say it's not that quick. But in a scope of time and transition, it is quick. And so we have become sort of a model. If you go to, you know, Major Chiefs or PERF, which is, you know, national organizations, they send people to Baltimore to reach out to us, to get our policies, to get our training. They come to our training academy. They come in, meet with the consent decree folks, the policy people, PIB. They come to learn from us how to do it. And we're very proud of that because it sort of takes what we've already recreated and helps them along the way, and it's proved positive feedback across the country.
Yeah. Thank you, DC. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to take a look back at 622 Police Patrol. I noticed that, oh, flip the page here. I noticed that one of the, one of the top performance measures there is the percent of time patrol officers spend on proactive policing. I want to get into the numbers themselves here in a second. But just to start with, describe the distinction between proactive policing and then the other things that are involved in this case in the approximately 70% of the time we're talking about. Just give us, paint us a picture of proactive policing versus other activity.
Yeah, proactive policing is basically self-initiated, where the officer isn't answering a call, he isn't, or she isn't writing a report. And they either get out of their car and walk foot. They make a vehicle stop. They do a business check. They interact with some, some young people. They do some kind of community interaction. All of those are proact, sort of proactivity. And then, of course, the majority of their time is spent handling calls and writing reports.
Gotcha. I noticed that the actuals here, 41% in '22, 47% in '23, 37% in '24. Do we have some sense of where that number is tracking in '25?
I do not, but I believe, well, all the proactivity stats are up. I've read, I've read those earlier. So it should be tracking well because one of the things that we did, when we had a lot of those fatal accidents in the last couple of years, and quite honestly, because people just drive the way they want since COVID, we've had a lot of, a huge increase in fatal accidents. We put a lot of emphasis on making vehicle stops and issuing citations for, for those type of behaviors. And then there's some other things that have come in, come into play. But one of the things that I heard all during my confirmation process and all through my time in the city, is people wanted to see foot officers. So we're getting our officers out of the car. I don't know that we'll ever be at the point that it was years ago when you know your local foot officer, but we'd like to do that. And one of the things that Councilman Torrance brought up that will help us get to this point is, are those 12-hour shifts. I think those are the wind force that we need. And that would drastically help us with overtime, and you'd have the same officers. We already, I'm already headed in that direction a little bit when I re-sectored. We re-sectored where we only have two sectors because that's going to allow us to help with those things because that means we have, we need less sergeants, if there's only two sergeants as opposed to three. So all those things, and then some of the things that have happened, our staffing has gone down simply because we have given some of the positions back because we've had to reorganize. And now I think I'm to the point where the intel part was the final part that I wanted to reorganize. And I think we have all the right people in the right seats now to keep going forward and keep building on this progress.
And Councilman Parker, this measure, like others, is updated with quarterly data from fiscal '25 on the performance plan. So for fiscal '25, quarter one, it was 46% of time was spent on proactive policing. Fiscal '25 second quarter was 48% of time spent on proactive policing. And fiscal '25 third quarter was 48% as well.
I really appreciate that, Director Larson. So those numbers are really encouraging. I see here from 47 to 37, and then targets at 33. And it, I mean, you all set the targets, right? I sort of presume. But I appreciate that the numbers are going up. And I wonder, is that, is that actually where you want it to be? I mean, do you want those numbers continuing growing? I mean, what's, based on your strategy, based on all you've said about kind of continuing to grow into the consent decree and, and a community policing model and achieving the strategies here, what is the correct percent or close to correct percent? And is it, if it's different than 33, what would you say it is?
I don't know if we want to put a number on that because we've thrown a lot of things at our cops over the last couple of years. We redistrict, then we re-sector. And we moved, we didn't move people, but they took over different boundaries. So they had to get used to a lot of things. The thing that I want to, want to see, I don't really want to put a number on it because it's really hard to measure. Because when we ask our officers to get out and do community policing, where they get out and play with a, play with a child or help them with their bike, we don't track that because they don't turn the camera. It's disingenuous to turn the camera on just because you're helping a kid with a bike. So I don't know that we'll ever be able to track how much community policing. What I do know is that when I'm at these events, people are telling me that they're seeing the cops out of their cars more, not as much as everybody wants, or that they're seeing the city is changing. And I think that goes back to everybody's hard work in the fact that I'd love to see us, I'd like to see us have 100% time to pre-elective. And we're not, we don't have any calls, which means there's no crime. But I don't, that's never going to happen. But I think the more we get staffed, the more time we can spend on proactive policing and community policing.
I want to commend the answer and the work you all doing here, and also those, those numbers. Recognizing that there's not one number you want to set on it, but I'm encouraged by kind of what we've seen so far through this, this year. My second question is, is under 623 back there, and has to do with homicide clearance rates. I noticed that, I mean, I know through news reports, I know from our conversations here that, that those have gone in really, in really positive directions. Fiscal year '24, the actual was 69. Director Larson, I'm sure there's a number out there already for, through the three quarters, but if you indulge me again, I appreciate the help. The question behind it, while Director Larson looks at the number, is, to what do you attribute that? I mean, I have my own sense from within the community and has a lot to do with, with trust and greater community collaboration, as well certainly as, you know, the, the skill of your officers and a lower caseload that allows, you know, but would love to hear you reflect on, on what has helped those numbers grow? Because it's, it's been, we were so low for so long, and it created such a cycle of, of violence without consequences that I, I see this number in particular as, as key and would love to hear your reflections on it.
I think the biggest, and I'm going to be biased here, is we've got an outstanding homicide unit. And now you're seeing what they can do when they have the proper time to investigate things. We hired, we have civilian investigators in our homicide unit because homicide detectives don't just investigate homicides. Every time someone, there's a suspicious death, they have to investigate it. A deal, any, any type of type where somebody dies, they have to do some type of investigation. So having civilian investigators has allowed us to delegate some of those things. And then the civilian investigators are helping homicide detectives. So, and then we're prosecuting more cases probably these last few years. But simply the fact that they've had time to do their job even more effectively. And one thing that I go back to is, if we could come up with five homicides every single month, they didn't go over their overtime budget in April. So if we could get it five homicides every month, we wouldn't, the lieutenant colonel said he wouldn't spend any overtime.
Are we, have we seen increased community? I mean, I know, I know this, it's, there's not a metric behind it. But if you can, anecdotally or narratively, have we seen greater willingness from community members to, to cooperate in investigations in recent years? I mean, has, has trust been rebuilt to, to allow some of this to be more effective?
Yes, I believe so. And one of the other things that helps us is that we have a victim services unit that goes along with our homicide detectives. Because it's, it's really tough. I had to do it when I was an officer, is tell someone their daughter had just been killed. And it's not an easy thing to do. And, I mean, we're cops. We're not really trained to do those type of things. So when you bring in someone who has that training, who can build the confidence and the trust of the citizens, and then the cops buy into using and utilizing that partnership, that works out great. And then people are calling us more. They are calling and giving us tips. So I think the community is seeing that we have changed as a department. And now all these things are coming together with a 60 to 70, I think it's 69 today, the clearance rates.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I've, I've seen the victim services in action and served alongside them in my role, my other professional role, and, and seen them be really effective and do that work well. So thank you for lifting up their work, and thank you for your answers.
Yes, sir.
Director Larson, was it?
In that particular metric, the department did not provide updated data as part of the quarterly updates.
Okay, that's fine. I appreciate it.
For the clearance rates?
Yeah.
It's 69 today. I believe it is today.
It's tough to report out quarterly clearance rate. We typically report at the end of the year. That's the short answer. Typically, we'll just report out at the end of the year. We track it every single day, so I can tell you what it is at the end of the quarter, but not necessarily the murders that occurred and the clearances that occurred within that particular quarter, if that makes sense.
I appreciate it. Thank you all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Gray.
Thank you. To continue on to that, happy to see that the clearance rate is staying consistent with fiscal year '24. But the target's dropped as far as the clearance rate to 42% in fiscal year '25. It only raises to 58% in fiscal year '26, which is a pretty significant decrease from the actual performance. And similarly, with non-fatal shootings, the clearance rate was 45% in fiscal year '24. But the target for both fiscal year '25 and '26 is just 29. What's driving these lower projections first? And with $110 million allocated to the Criminal Investigation Division, what specific strategies or resources are being put in place to improve those clearance rates beyond its current targets?
The targets are based on previous year. So for example, if we had a 30% clearance rate, we would probably go up like 15 or 20, try to increase 15 or 20% on that. So that's how we, we did those targets. The fortunate thing is that we've made a lot of progress with the group violence reduction strategy, with the reorganization. And the Criminal Investigation Bureau doesn't, isn't just homicide. That's all of our investigations, which have all been put under one umbrella now, which are shootings, aggravated assaults, robberies, domestics, just about anything that we investigate. And again, they're all working at 80% capacity. So those cases that have to be investigated, some of it has to be done on overtime. And for example, when, when a homicide detective gets a case, they probably don't go home for 24 or 48 hours because they, or they take a nap in, in the office and then go right back at it because those are the top times to get all the cases. And we close a lot of them with our partnerships. So we put a lot of, a lot of things that we talked about, just the DDSS, the citywide investigations went down 36% in their overtime this past period because they put in some metrics to manage it. And then we had less shootings and less homicides, is a little less money that we have to spend. But we still have to spend overtime on, on the investigations.
I really appreciate that insight. And my final question, can you walk me through the process in which you, how you work with your partners when it comes to? your partners when it comes to cases? When I talk about your partners, I'm talking about the state's attorney and the attorney general. So whether it's a major case or a smaller one with guns, drugs, or both, can you walk me through how the process typically works, especially in the context of GPRS? Do these cases usually start with BPD doing the groundwork, and then it gets handed off to the state's attorney's office or attorney general? Or do these agencies sometimes come to you with cases? I'm really just trying to understand what's the starting point before other partners get involved.
I'm going to, I'm going to let DC, I mean Lieutenant Colonel Velti, and then Lieutenant Colonel Herzog, who hasn't had the chance to talk yet today, we're going to get him involved in some of the things that he does with the state's attorney.
Good evening, thank you for your question, your interest in GPRS. Typically, the way it begins with GPRS and working with our partners of prosecution, it all starts at the violence reviews where in the GPRS districts, we review every non-fatal shooting homicide to determine whether it's group member involved or not. We look then overall, based on a scorecard metric, of which groups are the highest drivers of violence in what districts. Those groups are then assigned to GBU squads for investigations in a comprehensive manner to try to eliminate the majority of the crew and the ones that are tied to the violence. At the onset of an investigation, we partner with mainly the state's attorney's office. A prosecuting attorney is, for the lack of a better word, embedded at that point with all the investigations. So as we move through the investigation, we have a single point of contact for judicial review throughout the entirety of the investigation. So when we come for prosecution and takedown and arrest, everything's been quarterbacked through one person and one unit. We also work collectively with the attorney general's office as well, and in certain circumstances with the US Attorney's Office as well.
And that's for GPRS? In general, is that the same process? Like just outside of GPRS, is that the same process as well?
For which cases? For like?
For big or small cases.
So if a patrol officer was to make an arrest, you know, that would just go typically to central booking, and that would get assigned out to a state's attorney outside of our control. Lieutenant Colonel Herzog can probably speak on his, you know, with his investigations, how they work with the state's attorney's office.
Yeah, so we work directly with a particular, it's called GVED, at the state's attorney's office, the Gun Violence Enforcement Division. They invest, or they prosecute all of the non-fatal shooting and serious assault involving firearm investigations. So anytime we have a non-fatal shooting or any type of investigation that involves one of our DDUs, citywide robbery, that involves the discharging of a firearm, we partner immediately with them. What we're doing now is kind of modeling a little bit what we do, similar to what homicide does. They brief out extremely early on their investigations, basically the onset. We're trying to do that very similar. Obviously, there's a higher volume of non-fatal shootings, but we're working with them really early on. Another thing that we've been doing recently in collaboration with them is, so we've been setting up regular meetings. We just had our very first one, we're going to be doing another one where we have a number of cases from this year where we've identified persons of interest. We're not at a point where we're able to charge those investigations, but we're far enough along to have a person of interest in that case. So we're meeting with them in a group forum, going over those investigations in depth, and seeing what levers we can pull to try to bring those cases to closure. As a result of our first one, we identified a few follow-ups that were able to lead to some closures out of those, out of that particular meeting.
Okay, and so it goes down the central booking. So as a scenario, if I'm selling, if you catch me with like one, I guess, one pill or a pack, or you catch me with a dime bag or a pound, or two pounds of marijuana, the first point is to go down to central booking after that person is arrested. After they are arrested, what happens? Then it's, is it the state's attorney who charges, or is it up to them? And like, just, I just want to understand that process.
Yeah, there's a state's attorney who's assigned at central booking, and so they're involved in that immediate charging and bail process, you know, early on.
Okay, and there are times where they just deem, like, depending on the quantity or how much, it may not be something that they want to charge at that time? And at that point, what happens to that individual?
If they made a determination that they didn't want to proceed with the case, then they could drop charges at that point.
Just right on the spot?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I bring this up just because in my district, the Mizzou Shopping Center, we were talking about open-air drug markets, there were individuals who were arrested for having marijuana, a pound, under a pound, somewhere around that amount, corner CCTV, everything. They were taken down the central booking, they weren't charged. They came right back up and probably beat the police officer back before they finished their case. And so I was just trying to understand how that process works in order for me to get an understanding, because it's really hard, as Councilwoman Porter was stating, as Councilman Jones stated, it's really hard for us as council folks to stand in front of the community when there's an open-air drug market, and it's probably hard for you guys to do the same thing if you're standing in front of a community and you're doing the work, but not everything is connecting along. And so I'm, thank you for giving me that insight, I really appreciate it. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Cohen, excuse me, Council President Cohen.
Not a problem. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again, Commissioner, and all the folks who are here tonight. Commissioner, there is frustration, and you and I have talked in the past. I'm going to pick up on a previous question that Councilmember Gray made about inefficiencies within the ACC and concerns both among the board as well as advocates that we are not fast enough, that we are not addressing a significant and growing backlog, that we're not giving the board enough time to process cases. I asked the Office of Equity and Civil Rights to produce a two-page report making recommendations on how we could speed up the process and make it more fair. And again, something that Councilman Conway, who chairs the Public Safety Committee, has been very interested in, and a number of us have. But wanted to ask you, one, I want the Office of Equity and Civil Rights to take the lead on that because I think it's important for that office and the body of work that they have to lean in on that kind of reform work. But I'd like your support for it because I know that you have as much interest as anyone else in making sure that cases are adjudicated in an efficient, effective, proper manner. So I'd like, one, is I'd like your commitment to work with them on just producing some recommendations. And then, two, for this committee and for the council, in your opinion, what, where is the majority of the backlog? And I know there was some legislation in Annapolis in this last session, but what are some thoughts around how do we operate more efficiently and effectively so that we can, you know, just make sure that cases are adjudicated quickly and officers are able to get whatever justice they deserve?
Yeah, I'll let DC NATO start, I mean, finish it off, but I want to say that part of the issue is it takes a while to investigate these cases because you have hours and hours of body worn camera that they have to look at. And it's not like you can just skim through it, you actually have to pay attention in case there's other things that they find wrong. And then DC NATO will go over how-
Real quick, on that point, sir, didn't you tell me when we talked about this that you were attempting to civilianize some of that?
We have. They have civilian investigators in Public Integrity Bureau. So that's going to help with some of that. And then your staffing is still 80, is still only about 80%. But what they have to do is they've got a lot of, they've got to look at all the body worn camera footage, and then I know DC NATO brought it up, is when we, they, ACC bought a system that didn't talk to our system, so they had to do a workaround. But I think all those issues, and I'll let him finish it off, all those issues have pretty much have been resolved, and we haven't really had that problem since those things have come forth. And I believe Equity and Civil Rights actually has access.
What I will say is the process is set out in a manual that we must follow to make sure that every case is effectively addressed the same. I do realize that every person that files a complaint feels their complaint is the most important and to get it done, but again, we have 1,500 complaints to go through, which does take time. Staffing, number one issue. We all know it's staffing, we realize it's staffing, and that's why we have addressed since late last year, staffing is a number one priority. And so we're working on that. Addition to that is not just PIB.
Again, I'm going to pause you there, I apologize, deputy. You know, and this, to some degree, comes back to the, where we started this conversation tonight about recruitment and staffing, and I think specifically to this, the opportunity for civilianization and the ability to bring on non-sworn folks to pick up some part of this workload, I think is really important. So if you or Commissioner could talk about when you're seeing there's, staffing is the problem, how are we solving that problem? Like what does the recruitment specific to this workflow look like?
So I'll say civilian, right? We have assigned 10 civilian investigators to Public Integrity Bureau to assist with the staffing issue. Currently, seven of those are filled. We run into the problem, our people come in, they like the job, but after they're there for two or three years, they're looking for advancement. We are currently working on a process for advancement for professional staff to keep them here, but unfortunately, the city doesn't pay like other local jurisdictions around here do. So they get the experience from us, and they leave and go somewhere else where they'll pay them more. That is a problem. We have lost a few people to that. We also lost at least one to become a police officer, albeit not in Baltimore, but has left. So we're at seven, we have a pipeline in for hiring, we have another one starting next week, and we have the posting out. So staffing is the number one issue. The other issue is the solicitor's office. We take our cases when we finish them and send them to legal to review for legal sufficiency. They are, we currently have three, right? We currently have three people assigned to PIB to do that. In addition to doing that, they have to run all trial boards. They are severely understaffed, and so sometimes it sits with them for months. And if it gets to the end where it's actually going to expire, we're not required under the statute to send it to legal. That is a process we had in place under the old system. We like the process because then legal looks at it, they're the ones that have to prosecute it, they're the ones that look at the charging document, there has to be a legal-
I'm sorry, I'm going to slow you down again, sorry. You're not required to send it to legal. Isn't this a legal procedure to adjudicate a potential misconduct case? Like, can you explain what you mean there?
So there's nothing in the statute that says we have to have legal review. We, under the statute, we are to do an ACC case. We are to do the case and send it to the ACC. They then can develop charging documents themselves, do the charge, and send it back to us. Historically, before the ACC came into play, legal would do all the charges for BPD because they're the ones that had to prosecute it. So best they write the charging documents, they know what the statute is, and they write it. The ACC is allowed to write them, and they can use legal's charging document if they want, or they can change it. The problem we run into is when the ACC develops a charging document, and it comes back around, and we have to defend it at a trial board, if it's not accurately written, the solicitor's office will not defend it because they didn't charge it. And if it's charged incorrectly, we run into a problem. So we prefer legal to read them first. Legal is understaffed, and so there was a long delay with legal. And so now what we've done is if we get to the end of the delay and legal hasn't done it yet, we send it anyway, and we let the ACC do the charging documents. What I'm afraid of is with the ACC doing the charging documents, they're not the ones that have to defend it in court. That would be like, you know, a prosecutor's office taking over a case that they didn't write the charging document for, and there's a problem in the charge. So when they come back, there is no process because they have no attorneys assigned there. So there is no attorneys writing these. So that is the problem we're running into. So the solicitor's office is short-staffed, we've spoken to them about it, we've asked for additional staff to do the cases. That has not come to fruition yet.
It's really important that we get this right because people need to have faith that these cases are moving quickly. Part of how we, the department, got in trouble was officers committing acts of misconduct and folks looking the other way. That is not the culture within BPD right now. However, I think it is really important that whatever the bottlenecks, wherever they are, that we're working through it, and I know I got the best city solicitor in America right now, in Ebony Thompson, and so I know that she's going to run through walls to get this right. So I'll just say that, Councilman Conway, this, again, feels like a subject that is ripe for oversight within the Public Safety Committee, and I want to continue to have this conversation, I'm going to yield my time, but again, I continue to hear frustration among the folks who are involved in the ACC, the folks who pay attention to the ACC, and I can imagine officers are frustrated too because I would think you want it to get done quickly. So Debbie, I appreciate that explanation, I am not fully satisfied, and will ask for an additional offline conversation about this topic, but I appreciate it, and I do appreciate the complexity that you illuminated. Thank you, deputy, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to quickly follow up with the line of questioning. Thank you, Mr. President. It is the intention, it is my intention for us to have a discussion about this process in our July hearing. It would be helpful because I'm learning a little more every day about the process. Would you be able to provide as a follow-up, just a step-by-step process from the moment that you get the case of what has to happen in order for it to get to the ACC? It just helps me understand where the bottlenecks may exist, and especially in instances where we are not required to do something, but it is probably a best practice to do so, for instance, handing it over to the solicitor's office. Some of the context behind that is really helpful, and, you know, when we're thinking about funding for, you know, whether it's the PIB, or if it's funding perhaps for the solicitor's office so they can better support your efforts, I think that's, those are the kind of things that I'm looking for so that we can, you know, hopefully improve the process. So if we can get that 30 days, we're looking to do the hearing in mid-July, so 30 days would be sufficient.
Yes, sir. We can probably do our flow chart. Okay, thank you.
I thank everybody for joining tonight, the work that you've done in reducing our homicide rate. Like I said earlier, I remember when folks laughed when they said where we were going to be. And I said, I ain't there yet, I'm still not there, but I heard you when you said that you're going to work to get those vacancy numbers down, Commissioner. Also want to thank Deputy Mayor Bockstall, who's in the back. A lot of times, people do not thank you for the work that you did with these numbers, and I want to make sure that we acknowledge you today because this is a first budget hearing as a staffer, as a councilwoman, that we aren't complaining about our homicide rate, and we need to uplift that every single time that we can. We will see everyone at 9:00 AM tomorrow for day six of budget hearings. Have a great night.